This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, that's good. All right, I'm gonna have my phone on and my video on my laptop. So if that works, everybody's hearing me okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay, I'm not totally seeing everybody, but I'm gonna hope everybody's there. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the Southampton Select Board for December 6th at 6:02. And could we please start by saying the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands for the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks, guys. We have a little situation tonight. I've come down with a terrible cold and I just didn't want to pass it on with anybody. I've had a lousy couple of days here, so I thought it would be safer to try and do this meeting remotely. So please bear with me and hopefully we won't have too many glitches with what we're doing here. So, and that said, do we have open time for the public? Oh, let me just also say, because I am remoting in, I will, heading votes tonight will be roll call votes, okay? But that said, do we have anybody for open time for the public at the moment?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay. All right. Well, with that in mind, I'm gonna ask a little bit of indulgence. I know we have a hearing coming up at 6:15, but I'd like to ask if we could move the, any other business item, any other business that can't wait, a little bit forward and take up this time. If anybody does not object to that, could I get a general sense that that's okay to do? To move it up on the agenda?
Yep, go ahead.
Sure.
All right, all right. Then what I have, you were given something late this afternoon, and I appreciate your looking at it here. This was a most recent version of the conservation restrictions for the Madsen-Gilmore property. If you recall, we had actually signed these probably a couple of meetings ago when Mark Wamsley was here. And we knew that there might be some small changes from the state at that particular time. And so Mark had asked that we would sign it anyway, assuming that these changes would be minor. Since we last met, the state has indeed come back with a few changes. And I just wanted to kind of run through those real quickly. They would be in the word versions of what you received. They are not terribly major at all. It's really just moving language around to make it a little bit clearer and putting things in a different place. So what we have primarily for both the Madsen and the Gilmore one is referring to section, it's either nine or 10, I believe, on the issue of recreational and educational activities. So most of the language got changed around there. And you'll see on the word copy, there's a lot of strikeouts and so forth. But again, there's no substantial change from what I've talked to Mark Wamsley at Kestrel. But I just wanted to point out that that's where the changes were. And from what I'm understanding here, this is the language in the word document that we had originally signed. But now this has gone back to the state and these edits and the suggestions also include the responses to those changes. So they are the edits that were agreed upon by the state, the landowners, Madsen and Gilmore, and also Kestrel, and that are now incorporated into this final version. So we have then PDF, one for Madsen and one for Gilmore, that we are being asked to re-sign this evening, if everyone is okay with that. Any comments?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay. I don't think we really need to vote on it again, since we had voted to sign it before and these are really just editorial comments. And again, the landowners wanted to just get this signed so that we weren't, you know, doing anything that was different than what, you know, they might expect at the state level. Since they had made their changes, they didn't want to see that we had maybe changed something out that would cause them any hiccups down at the state level so that they could get these passed and take advantage, obviously, of the tax year that is about to end here. So that's the reason. And I appreciate everybody if you would please sign the PDFs later this evening before you leave.
The only question I had, Chris, is whether or not the changes that we made at the meeting were made. I didn't read through the entire document, because I just read Kestrel's comments, but the updates to the master plan was made?
Yes, yes, those were done, edited, done those, I think, before we passed it on to them.
Okay.
Yep, before we did our final signing, right. We did make a couple of small changes.
Okay, sounds good.
There are some, a couple of small factual changes and editorial things. Right, so good. Okay, so that's that. I appreciate everybody's indulgence on that one. So we have still a few more minutes to go here, I believe, before we can start the hearing. Am I correct on that, Ed?
Yes, you are correct, Chris.
And do we, I think I'm seeing maybe the neighbors that had been here before in the audience? And do we have the Eversource people in attendance tonight?
Yes, someone from Eversource is here.
Okay, very good. All right.
And Chris, just so you know, Darcy is going to be coming, but she might be closer to 6:30, okay? Darcy from the Board of Assessors?
Right, okay, yeah. I think we've got a couple of situations around the reporting tonight on that as well. So thanks for that. Okay. Nothing else on my end, just to remind people that the special town meeting is going to be next Tuesday at 7:00 PM at Nora School. And we have about 15 articles on the warrant, which I know Robert and Ed went through last week. You can follow that on our eMedia channel if you didn't have a chance to tune into that, or it's also posted on the website, so you can take a look at the articles that are coming forward. Many of them are quite routine, moving funds around. There's a couple of ones for community preservation, and then about seven that are either amendments or a couple of new bylaws for the town residents to consider. So please come out if you can at 7:00 PM next Tuesday, okay? All right. Anybody have any other notices or comments? We've got a few more minutes here before we can actually start this hearing.
No, there's a toy drive that I want to make sure everybody's aware of. I believe the Lions Club's been doing a toy drive. And then this coming Saturday, from beginning at 9:30, in conjunction with the police, they're doing a toy drive, I believe, in the parking lot of the police station. And they're also selling the historical societies, selling calendars for 2023.
Right, very good, yes, thank you for that. That is true. I think they were out there in the, kind of the rain last Saturday, trying to collect a few toys and hopefully they had a good start to that. But it's usually three different days. I know that they managed to do that. So the 10th, and then I believe again, maybe the 17th is the other one, also back at the gazebo area. So thanks for that, for the Lions Club and all that they're doing, as usual, on that. Very good. Okay. Well, we may have a quiet moment.
Chris, we've got five minutes. How about any objection if I just go through the PPPB report to the Select Board?
Sure. Ah, okay, that could be an idea, since you are there.
I can read that in under five minutes.
Sure, John, why don't you go ahead and do that? That's a good idea, thank you.
All right. So this is Report to the Select Board, specifically PPPB. As a refresher, the general responsibilities and duties of the PPP are for the administration of the bylaws and rules and regulations promulgated pursuant to the bylaws as passed by the voters. And they are specifically to maintain an effective personnel system, monitor the effectiveness of rules, regulations, procedures, and practices, and prepare an annual report to ensure that recruitment, selection, appointment, and removal of employees is consistent with the personnel bylaw and the rules and regulations adopted pursuant to the personnel bylaw. To ensure that the town acts affirmatively in providing maximum opportunities to all persons, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, political affiliation, age, handicap, or other non-merit factors, and with proper regard for privacy and constitutional rights for all positions and provide equally equal treatment in all aspects of personal management. To formulate and review the classification plan and the compensation plan, to evaluate and classify positions, or review requests for reclassification, and to maintain a centralized personnel record-keeping system. The committee is made up of five voting members, three of whom shall be elected by the citizens, two of whom are appointed, one from the Select Board and one from the Finance Board. For the past 20 months, there has not been a single elected citizen to the board, and the two appointees are holding it together. We continue to meet monthly on the third Thursday of the month. And as needed, the committee is focused on merely pushing or processing the paperwork along for Select Board action or ratification. The committee continues to hold the view that due to a lack of citizen participation, that the Select Board should seek to repeal or replace the current bylaw by finding funds to hire a part-time, two-day-a-week HR manager/director that acts independent of all departments and reports directly to the Select Board. Because this may involve pulling tasks currently done by others, that the Select Board should begin discussions around this thought prior to or parallel to the budget process. Lastly, the PPP would encourage the Select Board to look to the towns of Charlton and the town of Dudley as examples for other communities that have since modernized their PPP process. And there are hyperlinks attached in here to find that section. And then what's not written in here, but I meant to say it, is the committee couldn't act the way it is or operate the way it is if it wasn't for the support of Judy, the admin of the town administrator, in setting our agendas and posting them and keeping us in compliance with everything. We wouldn't be able to do it, so special thanks to her and her efforts.
Okay, very good, thanks, Sean. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on John's report there? That's, I know it's been a challenging several months trying to keep this committee functioning so that we can do all the necessary personnel business that we have here in town. And thanks to John and Donna, I believe, who have been holding the fort on this.
I definitely support the initiative to hire somebody. I know right now we have a neurodiversity program that's entirely funded for two years by ARPA funds. We have a conservation agent who's entirely funded for two years by ARPA funds. I would totally, I'm not saying that we should go in the direction of ARPA funds, but I totally support the idea of having a part-time HR person. So I'd be interested in talking about that.
Uh huh, okay, all right. Well, that would be something that we need to probably pick up at another meeting and after we have a chance to look at these two comparative towns that John has mentioned here, to take a look at how they've structured themselves and whether any of that would make any sense for Southampton. So that would be a good idea as well. Good.
Can you submit a document electronically, just so the links are easier to access?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Thanks.
Good. Anyone else have any comments about that?
I just wish I had something to add to that from the Piner Valley Planning Commission HR Subcommittee, but it's just, at this point in time, it's just, the silence is deafening. I'm not sure what's going on. But I would look to them as having, if it becomes a viable alternative to having some kind of role with us in accomplishing these things, because they're all important.
Yep, okay, very good. All right, well, thanks. And I think with that said, I think it's probably time to try to continue our poll hearing.
Yes, you may reopen the continuance of the poll hearing for Leadmine Road.
Okay, so at this point in time, at 6:15, I will reopen the continuance of the poll hearing. This is for N-Star Electric doing business as Eversource Energy. And this was for installing 11 midspan polls along Leadmine Road. So could we have the representative from Eversource, please?
Yes, it will be podium.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Cameron Bellman, I'm representing Eversource.
Maybe move the mic a little closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here to see if we can get those 11 midspan poles dropped in. The main reason for this is, these are old wire. I think we're doing a valuable hardening job here. And, you know, wires are getting heavier and we want more reliable wire on those poles. And we have long spans there as a stand existing. And we just want to put some poles in between those long spans to, you know, keep those wires up and keep power up.
Okay. And so this is not removing necessarily any poles, this is just inserting new poles in between time?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions from the Select Board?
So the new poles that are going, so all existing poles are gonna stay as-is?
Yes.
Or at least their locations are gonna stay?
Yes.
And then in between each set of poles, another support pole will go in place?
Correct.
Right? And of any of those new 11 poles, are they going to interfere with anyone's current right-of-way or access to their driveways?
So we, where these poles are set right now, they are all on public right-of-way. None of these are anybody's property. They are private property, but, I mean, I'm looking at the plans right now. Obviously, I can't see driveways here, but I don't really believe that we would put a pole in front of someone's driveway or anything like that.
Are they currently marked?
They should be. I don't know when this was staked. They should, if not, if not staked, is this gravel dirt or is this paved? Do you know, is this road here paved or not?
Paved.
So there should be paint on the ground if it's still there.
Okay.
And when does the work anticipate to begin?
That's hard to say. This could be months out. It's hard to put a timeline on that, six, eight months.
Okay. All right. And do we have any other questions from Select Board?
Do you know how old the existing poles are?
So that, so some, I've seen, I've seen poles in areas set back in 1960s. I don't know necessarily what these are. I can't say. I didn't stake any of this. I just got the plans they sent me here, kind of thing. So I can't tell you that, but if that pole, if there's a, are you asking me more in terms of, like, if an existing pole needs to be replaced as-is, kind of thing?
Yeah.
So we, whoever went out here and did this lateral hardening job, if you live in, they have all the existing poles and they're like, they already established whether that pole needs to be replaced or not. So if they went through and they did the analysis here and said that this pole needed to be replaced now is existing, that would mean the plans as well.
Okay. Okay.
And the standards have changed in terms of the length of the span?
Correct, yeah. As they are right now, usually in rural areas like this, like on roads like this, you'll get like 300-foot spans, which is just far too long now. They're sticking these heavy wires now on these poles and we want more reliable power, you know, all throughout. So we're just, we thought, you know, some of the areas that we'll stick here actually are getting midspan poles. And that's just for one reason or another, those existing poles were closer. You know, the span was closer, but the ones where we're sticking them in the middle, we feel that those are necessary.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the Select Board?
Yes, once started, how long will the project take to complete?
That is also a great question, but very, very hard to answer. It's 11 midspan poles and they're not replacing poles. So, I mean, they'll have a truck come in and they'll sit and they'll drill in the ground. This could take, the construction usually, like I said, is like six to eight months out. But when they get going, they're going, I don't want to put a timeline on it, I just don't know that answer.
Uh huh, okay. All right.
And it's not anticipated, sorry, it's not anticipated that there would be a loss of service during this period of time?
All this stuff should be done hot, meaning that power will run. You guys should use any internet power, anything like that.
Good. All very good questions. Great. Any others from Select Board?
Nope.
If not, are there any questions from people in the audience? If so, please come on up to the mic.
You gotta share the microphone.
Yeah, come on up to the mic and just introduce yourself and your address and your name.
Hello, my name is John, I live at 50 Leadmine Road. I've got a couple of questions. One, do you have any being on, because it does say on the card about underground conduit and cables?
Okay. Sit on the card. Um, you live?
Fifty.
Fifty, so it's right here. I haven't seen the layout of where, of what even is on those. Do you have a trans, do you know if you have a transformer on that pole in front of your house?
I don't think so.
Okay. If they're, I'm sure they will be digging, are you talking about digging in terms of underground power? Or are you talking about digging in terms of where they're gonna drop that?
Well, I don't think they're drilling throughout the pole. It wastes underground conduit and cable. And I'm wondering if the road is gonna be dug up?
Oh.
And how much intrusion on the tree line will it be?
So.
And what's underground cable, what's that?
So that's like riser, so that's if you have, it's hard to say, because I don't really know what this looks like out here for this distribution system. But if they're saying they have conduit coming up, it could be anything from, you know, pop rock cable conduit, from power conduit, you know, 220 power, secondary power. But I don't think they'll be digging, it won't be through the road. It won't be, they won't be killing the road there. And if they do, there's no, it's for something else. It's not for, it's not gonna be for power poles or anything like that.
Just going from half, is that gonna affect, is that gonna affect the wires going to another house?
That's a good question. So what I say, it's all hot, it's all done hot, it means that if they're, the 220 that's on, that's going to your house right now, will stay 220 and it will continue running power through your house throughout the construction. Whether they unhook it or do whatever, they can't, because, you know, they're running power. So that will, all the power should stay, all your 220 should stay. All your, you know, if you have fiber running to your house should stay, all your cable should stay.
Okay. Any other?
Oh, okay.
Now, when they come and do this, do they take equipment, the poles, is that left on the side of the road in the yards and the driveways, or is that taken every day?
That's a good question. So this is a good situation here, because they're not replacing poles. And when they replace poles, they actually, you know, power comes before cable and all that. So they actually end up, you actually end up having two poles. They chop the top of the power point of that existing pole, give all the comms on it. They drop a new pole in, electric comes in, puts electric on that new bigger pole. But then you kind of have like an ISO, because you have half a pole right there. And then, you know, cable will come by and whatever, and they'll move their cable onto that new electric pole. You guys are getting all new poles, no replacements. So the only thing that, the only material that you'll see is basically a little mound of dirt around where they just dug that hole for that pole.
That would be more of that day-to-day, night-to-night, job, you're a pole to pole.
There's not gonna be much equipment out there for dropping a new pole. When they start putting, when they start running wire on there, they do a pretty clean job. I mean, if, I don't know if you guys have seen it, when they run like power on like new distribution systems like in really busy towns, I mean, they're doing it with, you know, tons of cars passing. So they've gotten pretty clean and quick and tidy with it.
The 11 new poles, are they all gonna arrive on day one, or as they're ready for a pole, it comes in?
I think it's more like that. Again, I've never seen that construction done. I've seen, you know, driving by, running three phases over, you know, roads like that.
But should they decide to drop 11 poles on Leadmine Road, they couldn't just drop them on private property?
No.
Right, without owner's consent?
Oh, they're not gonna lay the poles down. They'll drop them, they should drop them straight.
Drill the hole, bring the pole in.
Pack it up, next one, drop it in, that way. I can't imagine them laying one down on anyone's property.
Okay.
Uh huh, okay. All right. Any further questions? All right. I believe then we probably need to move toward a vote to?
I think procedurally, you have to close the public hearing first.
Doing, okay. Thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Broden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fouls, aye. Okay. We will declare this hearing, public hearing closed. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the installation of 11 poles on Leadmine Road.
A second.
All right. That was Reenie, and then Joy has a second. Okay. All in favor, roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Broden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fouls, aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much for coming. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
You too. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. And thanks to the neighbors for having patience to come back again. Much appreciated.
Yeah, you're welcome anytime.
All right, very good.
We'll be in the next meeting.
All right. Okay, we will move on. We don't have any presentations this evening. We do have some reports to the Select Board. And thanks, John, for doing the PQB one already. Let's pick up, I believe, maybe Jen is not able to be there tonight to do the treasure collector report. So let's go ahead to Bradley with the town accountant report.
Yep. And just so you know, Darcy is here to follow.
All right. I thought I saw somebody walk in. Thank you.
Good evening. And we've got the option of town planning. Here's my report. Some current priorities and activities. Number one right now is the tax rate recap. We've been working on it, but it's still not closed yet. We thought we were gonna finish today, but we came to run more roadblocks. And we need to explain why our enterprise revenues are increasing in this winter 2023. So I reached out to the heads of both enterprise towns to get explanations. And we should be ready to submit tomorrow morning.
Bradley, would you speak up, please? They're having problems with that mic, so.
Do we have this in writing or no?
What's that?
Do we have this in writing?
No.
Okay, all right. No problem. I just wanted to look for it.
We're done with the tax rate recap. I'd love to thank Ed Gibson, Jen Day, Lucy, the town clerk, and Dave from the testers for their help. Really the first year I've done it by myself. They've all really contributed and helped. So we'll be more than ready next year to have it again. Next, most important is closing this year 2022. Jen and I are still working on reconciliations. We resolved our issue in February 2022, so we're moving on to March. Hope to get right back into that reconciliations. Once we're done with tax rate recap, with our receivables, we are making progress, but we're still not done prepping all those. Next thing would be the 1099 reporting. So once, however year 2022 ends, I need to send out 1099s to all vendors that have been paid over $600. I'll have to reach out to certain vendors if I don't have their 1099s. And we have to make some adjustments. I think last year where we have multiple vendors set up in the system and to avoid sending 1099s to the vendor whole time, we consolidate them so that they go to one vendor in our system. So we can have our software support help us with that, or I can make warrants. I did warrants last year, so it's more visible instead of behind scenes of moving around the money. And the other thing is I'm with Noah's, an accountant. I'm doing the warrant process, which maybe just fine this, but we'll touch on that later, a little later. Budget spending concerns. I have no budget spending concerns. I have 1570 in my account, so we don't plan to go over that. We have $20,39 in the state accounting line. We haven't spent a single dollar out of that, so at the end of the year, we could have grants out of that.
Sorry, that mic is really not working very well. I've already had, I can't hardly hear you, Bradley. I don't know what to do differently. You're sitting right on top of it, so I think it's just the mic issue tonight.
I can hear you. We can hear you.
Are you all done, Bradley?
Well, I have to get to my personnel space.
Maybe just try moving the mic like right in front of your face, like the town moderator says, like a ice cream cone.
All right, so as I stated, we don't have a consistent town accountant. We posted on Indeed now three times the position. We've had three candidates that we wanted to interview. Two of them canceled their interview on day four and one of them on day of. We had one Zoom call interview that went very well. We wanted to reach out and possibly offer a position, but Indeed sent them a message. We wanted to reach out and possibly offer a position, but Indeed sent them a message stating that we didn't, weren't interested in them. Of an employer assistant option. If you don't agree with anything with them on the Indeed website, after two weeks, Indeed will send them an automated message saying, I'm not interested. So we lost that person, they got another job. So I believe we'll repost the job again for fourth time. I'll get up on the results, first results to people. See us. But.
On there. I think I heard part of that.
Is it on, Ed?
Yep.
Yeah.
This has been posted three times and, and people have not, uh, not accepted the job or have, have decided not to come in for the interview. Is that what I've understood?
We've had three.
Thank you.
Two canceled, one we had a Zoom interview with. The job and still I'm doing pretty well preparing for the warrant process. I have CBO and I do all the research I can prepare. So I'm putting it very quick. With my half day on Friday, I'm able to input everything. It'll take me two to three hours before I'm here. So no real impact on my many duties. Take help. That's still something that I'll continue to look for candidates, but I'm surviving this time. Next four to six months. The MM AAA, which is the Association of Municipal Accountants and others. We will leave in March for our classes, so every day I will be taking at least one of the exams. There's two chances to pass to be certified. Possibility would, I would take a Mark Abrams group class to prepare for either the law or the practical journal entry portion. Is that a chance of passing one of them? My long-term issues are just counting policies, procedures, you know, haven't really been made since my last report, so that's still on my mind. And I'd like to transition digital documents when possible, so cut down on paper. Any questions?
Bradley, could you just clarify the, the 1099s? Are you talking about 1099s that, um, were earned in calendar year 2021 that were due to be reported in '22? Or this?
Calendar year 2022, so from January 1st to December 31st. Any vendor that we've paid over $600 that is a single proprietor. I suppose we can send them a 1099.
Right. So, but, so last year's 1099s went out?
Yes.
Okay.
And these have to be out to people by the end of January, the end of February?
Sometime around that.
Okay.
Do you, do you file with the government electronically or do you mail in the paper copies?
Last year we mailed it in. Yeah, we mailed it in to the address.
So February 28th. What's your, what's your general feeling on timeline? I mean, you know your office and where you are in paperwork and where you think, um.
This one's not, we're going to do something a little different. Bradley, would you please go sit? Because that might work.
Bradley can take my place tonight. How's that? Yeah, I can hear you guys fine. That, that podium mic is not.
This is incorrect, but I'll, I'll live with it.
There you go.
Could you, could you give us an update on where, what you believe the timeline is for free cash?
Free cash would require us to close fiscal year '22. And we're still not done with the reconciliations. We're through February 2022, so we need March, April, May, June of cash. And then we need a few more adjustments with our receivables. Then we'll be ready, I'll be ready to close the books. Then we'll report to the state, then we'll get the free cash. So estimate, I'll try my best in the month of December, but it's probably going to be early January.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to thank him. I see him every, every other week to do the vendor payroll. And he always has everything in order. He's able to answer all my questions. And just thank him for all the extra effort I think he's putting into manning, you know, the one-person accounting office.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
I appreciate it, Bradley.
If I could ask a couple of questions now that I can hear Bradley. So I missed a little bit of that. Did you mention anything about the financial software that you're looking into?
I've been with Jen and Ed and we've watched presentations and I'm not fully on board of any of them. I'm okay with pretty much all of them. It's really whatever would help Jen the most. So I'm flexible. We don't update, I'm fine because I've gotten so used to what we've had, but I understand new software would benefit all of us.
Yeah. I'm, I'm assuming that it would reduce some, some redundancy in terms of handling lots of paper and so forth and probably improve time efficiency, et cetera. Okay. And then just on the recruiting aspect, is there other choices besides Indeed? I know we've done them and we've gone to their, their free mode. Have, have you thought about other, other online platforms where we might also advertise? I know there's more than Indeed out there, but I don't know how many of them would also attract anybody that might have some municipal accounting background.
Sure, that's a possibility. So far, it's on Indeed, it's on our town website, and it's on the MM AAA, the Massachusetts Auditors and Accountants Association, where they have our assistant job posted under their available jobs.
Right.
In three places right now, we can always have more.
I'm just wondering if we know of any other towns that might have somebody who's in that role that would be willing to take on a few hours in our town and, and share the duties? I don't know if that's a reality or how we go about finding anybody, but I, I really just don't like the thought that you've already had nearly six months of, of having to do all this by yourself, which, uh, you know, certainly was not our, our hope to try and recruit somebody in a quick timeframe here. So whatever we can do to help out, let us know.
Can I just ask a question about that? The total number of hours a week is how many? 10?
For the assistant accountant?
Yeah.
Well, on the, on their resume, well, on their job application, it would be 20 hours a week, five hours a day, Monday through Thursday.
Okay. So it would be actually 19 or 19, not 20? Because it's, is it benefited?
It is benefit.
So it's 20 benefited?
It is 20.
I just wonder, because we have a new employee in the senior center department who has a lot of experience. She came in as a volunteer coordinator, I think might have twins at the local elementary school. Is it worth putting something in Tiger Talk? I mean, there's a lot of people that don't work while their kids are young and might have a background in kind of banking or accounting that would be able to do something like this with a little bit of flexibility and hours that could work for a parent? Is it worth putting something in the Tiger Talk? Or is that not appropriate mode of communication from the town? What do you think?
I'm not familiar with it, so I don't.
So Tiger Talk is a parent.
It's for parents.
It's a parent's, like a newsletter communication that comes out from the school. Separate from that, though, we could do, I mean, we could do that. Or we could take the job description and the posting and we could send it out through the email blast notification as a standalone, just saying being sent on behalf of the town.
Yeah. And there's a Facebook page, right? For, um.
Correct.
Parents? I think it'd be worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my other thought, we have other people who are working here part-time, very part-time, who may be able to absorb those hours and still, since it's already benefited, it wouldn't. And I think that's the deterrent in some instances. I, I don't, I'm not thinking of anyone in particular. I'm just raising it as a potential source of, to identify the suitable employee.
I think wherever we can advertise it locally would be helpful.
Yeah. I, I don't think there's any, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any reasons why we couldn't advertise it, you know, through the local, local parent teachers organizations, through the school, whatever, whatever we can find as means to get the word out.
I would almost, I would almost do it simultaneously, print it through there and then ask, uh, ask the town moderator to add it to his newspaper.
Yeah.
Can do that too.
Just go now at the same time, just trying to reach as many citizens as possible.
Right.
And the, the email blast that you mentioned was, how was that, how would that be done?
That's controlled by the building principal. I mean, I, I don't have a problem asking, but I'm, but I'm sure, you know, I don't have the documents, but.
Yeah.
Well, if you can send whatever documents. Okay. Um, what, I'd be happy to spread the word to through the Southampton News or wherever else, if you could send the select board whatever would, uh, you'd want to publicize about it.
20 hours a week, nine to three, $75,000 a year.
I believe it's nine.
It's just a joke.
I'm sure we got a few candidates there.
Right.
They'll get some attention.
Sorry, that was a typo. Put the comma in the wrong spot.
So maybe if you send out whatever documents, Bradley, that you would want to have publicized, the select board can help with divvying it up.
Okay. Good. Anything else, guys? Any questions? Any other questions?
One other question. We, it was announced that you have a mentor from the state. Is that still happening? Wasn't there, didn't you mention at one point that there was?
Not from the state. It's the chief financial officer from West Springfield.
Okay. So is that still happening and is that beneficial?
Yes. Sharon Wilcox.
Yeah.
We've had Zoom meetings. She's helped me with the tax rate recap. She's helped me with a few other questions. She's very helpful.
Okay. So that was just, that wasn't set up through the mass, I mean, what do you call it? Mass accounting office?
It's the association, right?
Was it set up through the association?
It was actually a direct reach out by the town administrator.
Okay. That's what I thought, given it was West Springfield. Okay. Whatever. I'm glad it's working.
Yes.
Okay. If no other questions for Bradley, thank you very much.
I've been kicked out. You're free to stay if you want.
Thanks, Bradley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bradley, thanks, Bradley.
Yeah. Because that mic is working, I think we'll ask Darcy if she wouldn't mind popping in there as well.
Sorry about that.
Somebody has some helium?
So if that means that the free cash should be certified sometime in the vicinity of January, we'll be looking to have another town.
It'll be submitted.
Submitted.
I'd probably give it to, a week or so after it's submitted.
Yeah. Usually it takes up to a week, so I'd say a week after.
Are we going to need another town meeting before the annual?
Some things may come up.
Okay.
You know, we, you know, we may have one in the January, February timeframe. If that, you can do it at the annual town meeting like we have the last two years.
Okay.
Yeah. Depending on what comes up, we thought we might have some time in, in February if we needed to have a, another special town meeting, but it really depends on what's, what's on the agenda that we need to deal with, I think. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Uh, if Darcy's there, could we have the assessors report? She may as well go ahead and take that same chair.
The mic's not working, so we're.
That mic is definitely working.
Sharing the lead here.
The podium mic is not.
The boards, there's a million of them.
All right. That's what I need to wipe out. All right. Darcy Gasparini with the Board of Assessor. The current priorities we're working on right now is the fiscal year 2023 tax recap. We've done our part and we're just waiting for the other part, as Bradley spoke to. We're finalizing fiscal year 2023 real and personal property values. We're just about finished with the abatements and exemptions for seniors, veterans, those things. We're staying pretty current with that. Let's see. Budget and spending, we're currently under budget because of our lack of filling the principal assessor's position. We're planning on moving that money into vendors to try to keep us, um, current and all of our deadlines with DOR. We're looking to get some technology upgrades also to streamline the workload in the office so that we can be more efficient and not need as much manpower. As far as the staffing, um, we still have not been able to find a qualified principal assessor. We've got our, had in the MAO website. We have had it on Indeed, but hadn't had much luck, so I don't know if that's something we could look into for the future. We have the current part-time assessor, Janine, and part-time assistant, part-time assistant assessor, Janine, and part-time Dave Zagorsky. The board members, we've all been kind of pitching in, just trying to keep everything afloat in the office, which is getting harder and harder. Dave will be on personal leave for six weeks, which is going to really put a strain.
Dave meeting the Board of Assessor Chair.
Sorry, Board of Assessor Chair, Dave Arnold. Yes. Sorry. Forget there's two Davs in there. So the office is going to be, be struggling a bit to try to get through all that. For the next four to six months, we're continuing to maintain the assessing database. We, um, you know, have been, need to meet all the Department of Revenue requirements. So that's going to be our priority for the next four to six months is keeping everything current. As far as long-term issues, just to get competitive wages for the department, you know, as it's getting harder and harder to find people, other towns are raising, they're anti on payroll, so it's, it's difficult. As far as, um, future tools, um, we're again, back to the technology to save some time and gain revenue. We have the, um, aerial imaging, which we've been able to capture quite a bit of, um, new growth with that. And we're hoping to do GSI, add that possibly, some interfacing with the building department to stay, save on manpower of double entering things and having it just slide over into our vision system. And then just general IT help in the, within the building, so.
Okay. Good. Anybody have any questions of Darcy?
No, just want to thank Darcy and the whole board for doing a great job trying to keep everything going. I think everyone's chipping in and doing a great job.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Yep. And Darcy, just one thing, you mentioned the, um, kind of liaising maybe a little bit with the building department is, in my understanding, that some of their software is something that would be compatible with what you're using in Vision now?
That's what we're hoping. We, we have to check on that. Dave Arnold was starting with that and then ended up on some personal leave. So, um, we're going to try to follow through with that and see if the present software will just be able to interface right in with the Vision, because right now it comes over in paper form and then Janine has to re-enter it into Vision. So if we could take that all out of the equation, it would save a lot of time, you know, and hours of data entry.
I can give you an update on that.
Okay.
When Novus finishes our server project, point could be moved to the server. And that would make it much easier for some automatic updates to flow between the offices.
Ron Lauren came to the assessors' meeting today and talked about that. And Art Lawrence is going to be checking on something tomorrow, because right now Janine doesn't have the ability to know when a building project has ended. She only really knows when it's started. So anyway, there, he came in and explained about a couple of possibilities and he's going to follow up with Art tomorrow with, with Janine.
Okay. Good. All right. Well, and I think with, as, as. All right, well, and I think with, as I said too, with the, the server, the Novus project too, that should be done by March, I believe, is what the goal is anyway, so that's not too far away, but that might be a way to at least tie in temporarily, or even maybe more permanently, with something that's more automated than what we have right now too, without having to switch software necessarily, but good, something we have to invest in more detail.
I'm not sure what that software program entails. I had recently, you know, on work side with Brimfield, had to apply for a permit for a client, and it was kind of nice the way it, it flowed through all the departments, so that, you know, if you owe back taxes, you're flagged and you can't get your permit. If you have something outstanding with conservation, it's flagged. You know, it goes through the checklist before you can get whatever permit, so that was kind of nice, so I don't know if the new program the town's getting will have that, but that was kind of a nice checklist for everybody in town offices to see what's going on.
Mm-hmm. Good, okay. Anybody else have any questions for Darcy?
Well, not really, I mean, yeah, I have questions, but it's, it's not fair to ask the questions right now, so I'll just make statements and then budget time we talk about it. I know we, we adjusted the wage up for the principal assessor in hopes of what was going on. A lot of things have happened outside our control since then, so I get that, but I'm wondering, you know, what your, what the board's thoughts are as we come up another budget season, another full year with the vacancy, even though, you know, the other David is helping out and doing a great job there, is it still the opinion of the board that we need a full-time person at that level doing that? Do we, do we want to continue on the way it is and not look for alternative options?
We absolutely need a full-time person to be doing it, you know, we're, as a board, taking on a lot of extra hours, trying to.
And so that's my question, at the principal assessor's level, or if there, if the assistance hours were able to be doubled and wages adjusted there, do you really need to have the full certification of a principal assessor to do it, or is it more of a support to free up?
I, I think we still would need, we still need a principal assessor.
Full-time?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think we had talked about, you know, adding more hours to our assistant to help out, but I, I think there's just so much involved with the office that we really need to have a dedicated full-time assessor onboard, because it's just not sustainable for us to keep this going.
Yeah, because, I mean, and I don't disagree with your position, I mean, that's the board's decision, and I'll support whatever the board wants to do, but if the board was ever to alter from that, then that would open up the possibility of outsourcing or combining with another municipality. But as long as we stick to the fact that we need a full-time 40-hour principal assessor, then we gotta figure out, how do we make that happen?
Right, right, and I, I think, you know, I can't answer for the whole board, but I think we're, you know, we would be willing to look at all options, but I think the overall sentiment was that we needed somebody in the office that could answer questions and could handle that day-to-day, higher-level.
Yep.
I just have noticed, or witnessed, I mean, I'm learning a lot in the assessors' office, to be honest with you, but I know that, like, you're going on a site visit for someone who's questioning their assessment. I think that there's a director level of need there in terms of what I've witnessed there, in terms of being able to stand behind the process that are used. I think that this, we are fortunate, because right now we have someone who's got a huge background in real estate, another one that's, the new person is background in titles, works currently doing title.
Title search.
Searching, and then Dave Arnold is extremely qualified, could easily be a principal assessor. So we have a very incredibly talented board that's doing a lot, much more than they normally should. I think they've captured a tremendous amount of growth, the whole personal property tax alone is major compared to years past, and I've just known of at least three or four situations where it, it takes somebody that, with authority to be able to address landowners around a difference, and I just think that there's a lot more that they could do if they had a full-time person. And I think there's a lot of benefit of local knowledge when it comes to the assessors' office.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it's not, it, it, having a full-time onboard principal assessor that knows the city, knows the town by the data being entered correctly and timely and being able to go around and look at different properties, it's just the growth that the town was missing by not having.
Yeah, and it, and it becomes one of the chicken or the egg, because if you're not recognizing the growth, you're not getting the revenue in, we're not getting the revenue and we can't trust everything else, so, you know, we went from, I don't even remember where we were, but we went up to sixty thousand, you know, and I'm just throwing numbers out. Do we go to eighty thousand, does that do it? Okay, but that would have a catastrophic effect, because that's one department head jumping up at least thirty thousand, so now, in the fairness equation, do we have to look at everybody else across the board? And it's great to have a board that's very experienced, but we know from PBB that quite the opposite can happen too, right? I just, it's great that we have that board and it's helping out right now, I just don't want to keep going through budget cycles with a vacancy having to rely on a board of volunteers.
And what we can do is, is look into other towns to give you a more, I know we did it a while ago, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but to look and see what the going pay rate is for the towns that are filling those vacancies, so that we can at least, you know, comparable-sized towns, so that we can have some data to give you. It's, and I'm not saying any other position is not important, but it's, it's a very important position that brings money to the town or can lose money for the town, so it's something that I feel like we want to have a very qualified person in there. If things aren't entered properly in the database, you lose revenue, so.
Right, okay, good, well, thanks, Darcy, for that, and I think there might be a little bit of homework there as we get ready toward budget, budget season, to take a look at maybe some information like you suggested from other towns. I know that had been presented when we had considered the, the increase in wages for the principal assessor before, but probably I could use another update too, when we get to budget season, which will be right around the corner, so. Good, if nobody has any other questions, thank you very, very much.
Just so you know, there have been a couple of applicants, but they did not, either weren't qualified or it wasn't a situation that would work, so it hasn't been completely no applicants.
Okay.
Yeah, we just actually got one today, but it was somebody from North Carolina wanting to do remote work, and then the other one wasn't qualified, so, so that's what we've had so far.
Well, we're getting the word out in North Carolina anyway.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, outreach.
All right.
All right, good, thanks very much, Darcy. Thanks, all right. All right, moving on, I think I'm understanding Jen could not make it this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so with that, we'll, we'll book her on for the, probably the last meeting that we do in December, so that we have a chance to hear from Jen as well.
Yes, I actually told her today when she had this come up and she couldn't be here that we'd give her a rain check to December 20th.
That sounds good, all right, thank you for that. Okay, so let's move on to reports. Ed, how about your town administrator report?
Sure. We had a meeting this past Friday with representatives from Kestrel, the Cortneys, and the town in regard to the purchase of the 235 Pomeroy Meadow Road property. The meeting was in regards to the language which would be in the purchase and sale agreement. The meeting went well, and I am optimistic that mutual agreeable language will be forthcoming for that. The ID credentialing system is scheduled to be installed on the administrative assistance computer next Tuesday, December 13th, by a representative from the company, Hagens Corp. We had our yearly Maya insurance review this morning, there may be a couple of properties that we should take a look at the value of, along with updating some of our equipment lists for the insurance purposes. Our workers' comp experience due to the one high claim about eighteen months ago will affect our workers' comp premiums for another year or two. Bradley Oxon and David Zagorsky submitted the tax recap information to the Department of Local Services today through their Gateway app. They have some questions regarding the two enterprise fund revenues, so Bradley is working with Tom Gahn and Randall Kemp to get them those responses by tomorrow, to finish that process. Just to let you know, you may have heard it when you came in, but there is an error code which started this morning on the town hall alarm panel for a trouble signal, the alarm company has been notified and will be sending a technician to take care of that issue. And then there is still funding available from the Community Compact, and I would like permission to apply for the classification and compensation study under the HR best practices area. If approved, we would be able to save some ARPA funds for other projects, and the Community Compact is awarded on a rolling basis, so it should not slow the progress of this project down. And then upcoming select board meetings, December 20th, there's also the, will be one just before the special town meeting on December 13th, and the special town meeting is Tuesday, December 13th, at William Norris Elementary School at 7:00 PM.
Mm-hmm, okay, thanks, Ed. Anybody have any questions of Ed on the report?
Well, and the last one, do you have a dollar amount in mind for the Community Compact grant?
My memory from the, wow, there's a holding place for ARPA funds for thirty-five thousand. I did, was able to get a proposal, and that's why that list of positions is in the packet this evening. I sent that list of positions to the Cowan Center to get a proposal and a quote. For the number of positions that's there, it would be twenty-three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, okay. So Ed, this would be kind of a simultaneous thing, I mean, we, we could actually, we, well, I guess we couldn't necessarily engage the Cowan Center, or we could engage them, but we couldn't incur any real expenses, right? If we wanted to use the grant?
Correct, and, you know, from what, I don't, because of their schedule, I know they wouldn't have started immediately, so I can still sign the proposal, get it in, get us on the list to go, but like I say, with the rolling basis for the Community Compact, usually we'd know in like a week to ten days, so we would not have incurred any funds and could switch, you know, switch the funding sources over.
Mm-hmm. And just to remind us, I think this, this is before my time, but I believe this is how we had financed the original study, the Jacob Study, right, was through the Community Compact?
It was my, it was before my time also, but yes, that is my understanding of how they did that study.
Mm-hmm. But we have flexibility to choose the vendor, I mean.
Well, in this particular case, the Cowan Center is actually a municipal agency or a state agency, so we can directly engage them.
I see, okay. All right, so with that information, does anybody else have any thoughts and/or would like to?
Are we gonna get more in-depth when we get to that line item? Or are we taking it all up now? Because isn't that what's referenced as number forty-six?
I believe so.
Positions and classification? I'd like to talk about it, I mean, whether we talk now or when we get there, either way's fine with me.
Yeah, let's remember to talk about it when we get there then, that may be the best way to do that, tie it all together. Okay, good. Any other questions on Ed? If not, let's move on to some select board reports. Who would like to go first? Joy, you got something?
Sure. Conservation Commission met last night, they had, I didn't see it on the agenda for tonight, but there was a letter that ran around in regards to a property in town that's in Chapter 61A, and the new owners are requesting a change in, or in it being removed out of 61A, and Conservation Commission discussed that a little bit, but they didn't go in-depth because it was, they wanted select board, they said it was a select board issue at this point and up to town council, but I won't go too in-depth with it, because I don't see it on the agenda today. And they had a new application from Lexi Richard, who is seeking to become a new member, and they requested that I ask to have the application put on the next agenda meeting for our, prior to the town meeting. They would like to have her sworn in for their December 19th meeting, because they won't have any meetings in January due to the holidays. They also discussed, there was a proposal in regards to potentially putting in the Council of Aging Center by the fire station, which I'm sure would be in coordination with the public safety, replacing, the fire station moving to a public safety, and they just were going, this was all speculation in regards to what would happen if that were to occur and what the Conservation Commission would require, and they stated that they would require the town to go for, through with an NOI if there was any work to be done on that property at all. And their next meeting is December 19th, as I mentioned. Open space met last Thursday, they went more into the Chapter 61 property, which, when that's on the agenda, I can discuss more of, and they discussed, they had, likely from Kestrel, discussing property owners that they have approached who are interested in joining the land grant program that they had presented earlier this year, and they're gonna apply for a neighborhood outreach program, grant, so that they can do some more work with those owners or, and people who might be on the fence about joining that grant program. And their next meeting is January 5th, I believe, and I believe that was all who met.
Okay, all right, Rini?
I just want to ask, Joy, is there a timetable for the man-hand trail to be opened?
I don't know if there's a timetable, I do know that they're working on it.
It's currently being worked on?
Yeah, it's being worked on, for sure, but I don't have a date.
Okay.
For completion of work.
All right.
Also, it depends on the railroad closing. That was a question, yeah, when is, do we have a date for that closing?
Sometime, I don't have a firm date, should be closing before December 31st.
Okay, yeah, so that's also something that they're waiting on as well.
Okay. As far as my committee, CPC hasn't met, no meetings planned, Board of Assessors, you just heard from Darcy, the next meeting is Tuesday, December 20th at 2:00, in person. Council on Aging Hasn't met, they're meeting tomorrow at 4:00 by Zoom. COA Building Feasibility Committee met on the first with Abacus Architects and Planners. They continue to update data on the sites, they did reach out to both the Board of Health and Conservation Commission. They have a proposed, they gave the committee a proposed draft of a building plan, they received feedback from the committee, and the next meeting is on the 15th at noon via Zoom. And then Public Safety Building Committee met on the 14th, what's the 14th? Not this past Monday, the Monday before, they, the RFQ has been updated, is that posted now?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. That, basically, like I reported last time, is revised RFQ with a longer timeframe and broader submission requirements, or, you know, a little bit more relaxed submission requirements. The next meeting is on the 9th of January, and there's also gonna be plans to have a site visit Hadley Public Safety, and we elected a new chair of that committee since Sarah Stein moved out of town, Mark Donald was elected chair and ran the last meeting, and the plan is to have a joint meeting with the COA Building Committee, hopefully in early February.
Okay, good. Thanks, Rini, Francine?
Okay, the Bylaw Committee met on November 30th, they reviewed and finalized the articles that will be at the special town, in the special town meeting warrant. The bylaws are matter on public ways or places and littering, soliciting and canvassing an amendment to a bylaw that was passed in June of 2022, an amendment to an existing bylaw on dogs for licensing, kennels, and complaints, a new amendment, no, not a new amendment, a revision to the curb cuts bylaw that's currently existing. amendment, a revision to the curb cuts by law that currently exists, a new amendment on marking of town owned vehicles, another new amendment on the Affordable Housing Trust, and another final new amendment on the humane care and treatment of domesticated animals. So there will all be articles on the special town meeting warrant for the public to approve of. The Board of Health met tonight, and unfortunately, I left before the meeting was over, but a couple of things in the COVID update arena. There are 11 cases in Southampton. There are 186 known cases in Hampshire, but this does not include the people, and we know that the majority of people do home tests. And those test results, unless people report them, are not among these numbers. So you can just envision that the number of COVID cases current is much higher than the number I'm discussing with you tonight. The Board of Health held a vaccination clinic on November 30th at Norris School, and they had people from, of all ages, from little kids to older adults, and they vaccinated over 200 people, which is, you know, which is another good thing to try to keep the numbers of infections down. The Board of Health has ordered 700 more through the state, 700 more at home COVID tests, because they're, they're really, I'm not going to say flying off the shelves, but they certainly are being consumed at a greater rate, the deeper we get into this. I was informed, they informed us tonight that the, the public health, the National Public Health Emergency has been extended. The deadline was January 11th. It's now been moved to April 11th. And that means that people can get free vaccinations and some medical care without having to go through their insurance company at this point in time. Because when that ends, it's going to start costing people money through their insurance carrier or their private pay. So that's something to keep in mind. So another, another three months added to that. And because I had to leave, that's, that's all the information I have to share with you tonight.
Okay. Very good. Just, let's both think, Francine, on the bylaws, the last three were actually new bylaws. They're not amendments, right?
Yeah. I thought I mentioned that. Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, very good. John?
I don't think I had any meetings in the past two weeks.
That you remember.
That I recall.
Very good.
I do want to mention, I did get an update from Conservation Commission in real time, and they said that man hand medals would be open as soon as the railroad purchase went through.
Okay, pretty soon. So hopefully in January then, that would be a possibility. That's great to know.
I agree.
All right. Just briefly then, from the Ed-Hoc Grant Committee, we are still looking at possibilities for grants, but we do have a little bit of an update. We don't have any news on the Stormwater Grant Asset Management Program that Tynan Bond and the Highway Department put in for. This was a culvert assessment study. This probably won't be announced before February, from what I've heard lately. So this is one grant that's still outstanding. We have no idea where we stand on that one. The one that we had put in that I had mentioned for Mass Trails that we had not heard from, it turns out, we had not only gotten the $300,000 way back several months ago now. If you recall, Ed and I went down to Milton to receive that, that award. We had applied a second time in the spring for an additional $200,000 and had not heard from that. What we just learned was that the state somehow was nice and kind, and we actually didn't get the full thing, but we did get another $100,000 of that request. So that means that we have a total of $400,000 for Mass Trails toward the design and permitting and engineering phase of, of the Greenway. So that's good news. So that closes out that.
Really good news.
So there's really one outstanding grant right now, plus the DOT one that we submitted quite recently, which we'll know something on in January. The new Mass Trails round is open, as is the Land, Water, and Conservation Grant, as is the One Stop Grant Program. So there's lots of grants open. It's a matter of figuring out, you know, are there ones that we really should go for? You know, we can't go for everything, obviously. And, you know, the grant committee is really only trying to react when other departments bring it to our attention, saying, hey, look, you know, we really would like to go for this grant, but we need help. So we're trying not to, you know, do grants in isolation of anybody, but rather try to respond and work with committees that are doing this. I think, from what I've heard, the Greenway Committee does want to apply yet again for another Mass Trails grant, and they are going to take the lead on that. And so we've said that we would be willing to join in and help out however, however we can from the grant committee's side. But, you know, we've done pretty well, and I'll have a report at the end of December for you all in terms of recapping the, the various grant monies that have come in over the year. So that's where we are. And we'll have a Cost efficiencies committee meeting on the 14th. Okay? So that's where that stands right now.
Chris, would it be okay to ask if the, I keep bringing this up because I just don't want it to be forgotten about, and that is the grant that received to update the MVP plan? Do I get that right?
Yeah, that's the Stormwater one that I mentioned. Oh, I'm sorry, no, different one. Sorry. Yeah, the Hazard Mitigation Grant.
Hazard mitigation plan.
Correct.
Can we add that to the pending items? Because I know, I mean, we already got the money on that, and I just haven't heard anything about that. And I know that our plan is expiring, I think it already expired.
It has expired, yep. And we have, we have gotten the, the grant, they sent the paperwork around just very recently, within this last month. And we need to get a committee together per what we had put in the proposal. And I think with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, various chief workmen are certainly heavily going to be involved in that, Highway Department, et cetera. And so we've got a process that we'll have to go through, but we'll have to identify a consultant to help us carry out the update of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Correct.
So the next step is to put a committee together and have a company, engage a company, like I know the MVP, we had Fosse &amp; O'Neil, and Opina Valley obviously does a lot of that.
Right.
Would it be okay to add it to the pending items so I don't have to bring it up every time?
Absolutely, yep. And I think we've got a, you know, committee of sorts that we had to put in as, as part of the grant proposal itself. So it's a matter of convening the committee, but the, the step will be to really figure out how to go ahead and, and reach out to get a couple of, I think we need probably at least anyway, three firms to try and give us a quote as to whether they could help us out in terms of carrying out this task of the HMG update.
And where is the current expired Hazard Mitigation Plan? Do you have that?
It's on our website.
It's on the website? Okay. I'll look at it. Thanks.
Yep. Yeah, I believe it expired in January, if I'm not mistaken. I'm thinking, yeah, I think January, yep. But as long as we had been applying for this one, it was fine. So they, they, they know that. In fact, they've given us, I believe this grant is a two-year grant, so they've given us a long time to even do the update, which surprises me, but-
Yes, you're correct.
It's, you know, some of these grants are so short, and this one is so long, so I don't quite get it, but we should see. So we'll get working on it, anyway. In the new year, yes. Okay, so that's it from reports. How about on appointments? It looks like we have one. Who would like to take that? Ed, would you like to just bring that up? Or, I don't know, anybody? So I'm going to roll up my screen here to find it. Here, I know we had one. This is for, sorry, for Gen Day. Here we go. For Gen Day for the zoning Board of Appeals, I believe, a term to expire the end of June Could anybody talk to that a little bit? I don't have the paperwork in front of me about her interest and qualifications.
Well, I have the information here. I mean, I can certainly, I'm happy to read the letter that she wrote.
Sure.
Dear Board Members, I'm writing to respectfully request that I be appointed to the vacant seat on the Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. I've been a resident of Southampton for 16 years, and I'm currently the treasure collector for the town of Southampton, having served in that capacity for the past four-plus years. I have a BS in Business Administration. In my work, I interact with citizens, real estate brokers, developers, and attorneys, as well as state agencies. On a daily basis, I interact with land use offices such as the Building Department, the Assessors Office, the Health Department, and the Water Department. I'm also familiar with land court proceedings, tax title issues, the open meeting law, public records law, and Ethics Commission regulations that affect the lawful operation of town boards and committees. I believe that my education experience working in town government would be of service to the board, and my knowledge of the town and various town departments will assist in the performance of the board's duties. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to hearing from you. Very truly yours, Jennifer Day. And then she has a application to serve on town boards or committees-
Mm-hmm.
-and refers to the letter I just read.
Okay. Great. And so this is to fill in a vacancy that currently exists. I take it?
Correct.
And it's through June 30th of 2025.
Right.
So how many ZBA members are there? I know that of three at the moment.
There are four? Well, there-
There are four. There are five positions and one alternate, and the alternate position is currently not filled either.
And is there any regulation that says that it shouldn't be staffed by two department heads?
No. And I also checked with town council on the person being an elected official, and there wasn't any conflict of interest or reason not to, because of that.
The ZBA, are there any activities of that committee that happened during normal working hours? Do site inspections go out and do reviews, or is it merely hearings after hours?
Hearings are after hours.
Their meetings are usually, don't start until 5:00 or 5:30 after business hours.
But they're not doing any field inspections like the Conservation Committee?
I, I think on occasion, they might go out to look at it, you know, a property line or, you know-
Well, that might present a violation of the special municipal employee designation that we're going to take up later.
But any site visits they do, again, are after hours around weekends, so.
That I'm aware of. I'm not aware of many, and I'm just saying. And, and to my knowledge, it's, the site visits have not been carried out by an employee of the town. It's been a member of the board.
And not, not every, like with CONCON, not every member of the board has to go on the site visit, I don't believe, right?
No.
No, but speaking by personal experience, when CONCON did my walk on, there were 25 people. So, I mean, and it was during the day. That's why I specifically referenced them. But if their onsite inspections happened after 5:00 PM, it's fine.
Okay. And the work of the ZBA is basically to review variances that, zoning variances that are brought to their attention by primarily the planning board?
Yes.
Yes.
Well-
And the owners and the builders.
It's an appeal process, right?
If someone has a building permit that isn't approved by the building commissioner due to reasons like setback or anything like that, once the building permit is denied for those reasons, that can send them to the ZBA also.
But primarily, the work of the board is to entertain any appeal that primarily comes out of planning board, right?
Right.
Correct.
To build something closer to the property line for variance, those kinds of things, height. Again, it's, it's asking for, for a variance in the, in the zoning.
And there's no conflict in terms of a position in town? You said you checked with the attorney on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. If no further questions, would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Say we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yeah, I was just going to say this. Right now, the ZBA really can't operate because they're low, so if we're not going to move, if you're not going to move forward on this, would one of you like to volunteer for a short period of time to fill that vacancy so they can do what they need to do?
That's true.
You can say the same thing about the assessors, too.
They had their last meeting, the last meeting I attended had to be continued because they did not have, they didn't have sufficient members.
Well, they have a quorum of three, right? I mean, right now, we have a ZBA chair, I mean, the Board of Assessors Chair, I don't think he went to bat for that committee. He's on a personal leave for six weeks.
Their legal decisions aren't based on a quorum. They're based on certain things that are in the legislature. And when you're down to, I think it's four, and you may have someone that's abstaining or has a conflict of interest, but when you're down to four, I believe it's unanimous decision. So it's not just because you have a quorum, you can move forward.
Right. And, yes. And in the, at the last meeting, one of the members had to abstain for a conflict of interest.
And just for my clarity, as I'm hearing part of this, in my understanding, there's a level of reticence to move forward with a motion on this position? Is that correct?
Nobody, nobody made a motion. Or commented one way or the other. Does the post require residency?
And she's a resident?
I, yes. Does the post require residency?
Oh.
I believe so.
And so do you want to pass on this and come back to it? Or, I'm, I'm not clear on what people's, people's desire is, I'm sorry, not, not being able to read the room from distance here?
I think, well, there's a lack of emotion, but then the, the town administrator adequately pointed out that there's a, without appointing somebody, there's a jeopardy that the committee will be at a standstill and unable to move forward because of the four people, one of whom appears to have a reason to abstain, and therefore, whatever vote is pending before the body can't be taken without, without at least four members. Am I adequately representing that?
You did.
Yep.
Okay. Got it.
So the, the town administrator asked if a select board member would be willing to take that up temporarily.
Got it. Okay.
Well, I mean, you have to have a lot of knowledge. It's not like someone can just go sit in there without some background in, in some of the decisions that they have to make. So I, you know, I hesitate for, for that. I guess, I, I thought that would just be until, this is just completing the term of the person who was appointed. It's not like an interim until the next fiscal year. Right?
Well, that person's term would have gone to June 30th, 2025.
I understand.
This isn't an elected position, though.
No, it is. These positions are appointed by the select board.
Which is why we can go past the election cycle.
Correct. Yes.
Right. Yep.
All right.
Okay, hearing, no motion? We move forward on the agenda?
Sure. The five chief is here.
Yes.
All right. And we have still nobody from select board volunteering to fill in the position, so ZBA is not able to meet, from what I'm understanding, on a particular issue, unless they have their four people.
Honestly, you know, I hesitate. I'm the liaison, but I come back, I don't, I don't have the technical knowledge to, to help make these decisions.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wonder if we couldn't, if someone from the planning board, who would be more in line, might be someone who could be willing to, to volunteer.
That would probably be a direct conflict of interest because their ruling on things the planning board may have already ruled on.
Okay.
Is the ZBA scheduled to meet within the next two weeks?
I think they're just waiting to have someone come on board to continue that one hearing.
I want them to meet, Francine. You mentioned that they don't meet that often.
They meet fairly, I mean, they only meet at times when someone applies for some variance.
I've heard you say in the past that there's no regular schedule and they don't meet very often.
Right. I'm going to say maybe four or five times a year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So at this point in time, they don't have a, a meeting scheduled until they have somebody come on board? So they, they do have an issue before them, is what I understand, that they cannot move on.
Okay.
Correct?
So I'm, I'm just going to say to you, I would be willing to volunteer. I go to the meetings anyway. I'm physically present. If, I mean, if you just want to put someone there just to get us through this interim period while we secure a more qualified person, I would be willing to do it. But, but I'm, I'm not sure I add any value to the discussion.
Okay.
That answers that. Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to give our liaison voting authority while we work through this. I mean, it looks like there's, the issue is centered around 39 College Highway, just going off their minutes, but they're off the current agendas. I mean-
Uh-huh. Okay. And our goal is to get somebody more qualified- Okay. And our goal is to get somebody more qualified in general. Is that what we're trying to say here?
I would never, I would never say that Francine is not qualified.
I'm saying I'm not. I'm saying I'm willing.
When you, when you think about it, okay, what experience, other than one who is an attorney, what experience did the others have when they started on that board? Probably none.
Well, but where they are now, I'm just like at the beginning of the learning curve. I mean, they're years, light years ahead of me in terms of the technical knowledge and the regulations that they refer to in helping to make their decisions. I would just have to follow what other people tell me and assume that it's correct.
There are four current members of the committee. There's no reason why they can't meet. I don't personally like being threatened as a select board member that, how would you like to go there if you're not going to be willing to support somebody? We have a Board of Assessors that's going with two members, and one of them is on a personal leave, the one that has the most amount of information in terms of the assessors' office. So I'm not really sure why we're spending a half an hour talking about this. That's my opinion.
Okay. So.
Do you want to put it on the agenda for the next, and we'll have some time in between to think about this?
I was going to suggest that we put it on the.
And in the interim, if a meeting comes up, and if, you know, I haven't been appointed, so I'll just, I'll back off of the offer to, to fill in. But, but at least consider in the interim, and let's talk about our next scheduled meeting.
All right, that's fine. Let's, let's pass on this and bring it up at our next meeting. We'll keep it on the agenda. All right? Thank you. All right, next new business. We have a couple of things. We have Fire Chief John Workman present. We have got a couple of issues. One is a carryover issue. I know from our last meeting, we had a couple of questions about PCFs. And I believe he's got one other issue that he wants to bring up. We'd like to dedicate maybe 15 minutes to this discussion, so we can keep on moving, okay?
Great.
John, if you're there, thank you.
John Workman, Fire Chief. Yeah, there were two issues. One was, you folks had some questions in regards to appointments of two captains. My, from what I'm hearing, is regards to gender and wage discrepancy.
The question was, why was there a difference? We didn't understand the background in terms of experience that brought you to recommend these salaries.
So Captain Blomstrom has 27, 27 years as a medic and closes at 30 in EMS. Straight off the wage sheet, which is filed with our Personnel Policy Procedure Board, if you go strictly by that, there's a $6.92 difference. There's one, Captain Blomstrom has, gets $1.50 as a professional firefighter. He's gotten a 50 cent narcotics exchange addition and a 50 cent for training aid. The difference is 32 cents left over from that. He's been with the department for 12 years. Captain Morton has been, been a medic for three years. She's been in EMS for seven years. We're actually very proud. She's Southampton's first female officer, so we're very proud of that. I've got a, I think Cindy's a great member of the team. Her father was a Southampton Fire Department member years ago. She's the only, she is the only female EMS coordinator in Hampshire County. So we've started her off before. She has a ton of experience, but have a lot of faith in her. She's a hardworking individual. And even though I'm bringing her in and she's fairly entry level, I believe she'll be an asset to the community and the department.
And obviously, they both have the same responsibilities.
Relative, yeah. I mean, one has.
I mean, in these roles, one doesn't do more than the other. So they're, okay.
There's a lot of different things that happen. They share the responsibilities. Certainly, 27 years of experience gives some better oversight. We often turn to Rich for advice in regards to some of the things that need to happen.
The, the two certifications that you said that Richard had over Cynthia, the Narcan and the training?
Yep.
If she was to move forward and obtain those classifications, she would get the same increase?
Yeah, absolutely. And if she'd been working for the department for 12 years, she'd probably get, you know, the 32 cents as well.
So I understand the longevity, right? That's one piece. But the other two pieces that you mentioned were specific training that because he has them on the wage scale, he gets an additional bump due to that. But nothing prevents Cynthia from obtaining that same certification, then she would get the same bump. It's not like one person has it, so until he leaves, you, you can't get it even if you have the certification. If she earns the certification, she's entitled to the bump in pay.
Correct.
Chief, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The date, effective date is 10/1/22. These are signed off by various departments, 10/27, 10/26, and then 11/17. So are these retroactive and is it within the budget?
Yeah, it's basically, they get a dollar per hour for the hours that they've worked, retroactive to the date that I put through the paperwork.
Okay. So you signed it on the 25th of October, but it's, the date, effective date is 10/1?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And it's neutral on the budget because the existing EMC coordinator has retired?
He's in the process of retiring, so he's really.
Doing less hours?
Doing less hours. We have, we have the state coming in this, this month. It's a very busy month for us just organizing all of the paperwork that we need to, certifications, training, and that sort of thing. So just, it's imperative that these people are able to do their job and get compensated for it.
All right. And if the understanding is that two of them are moving up from lieutenant to captain, is that correct? And will be sharing these duties?
That's correct.
And they themselves are clear in terms of their responsibilities, I take it, given a shared position is sometimes a challenge?
Yes. The, the team works together very well and shares duties and work as needed.
So you wouldn't see the two of them on duty at the same time, likely?
They could be on duty at the same time, if needed.
Okay.
Well, just to clarify, but not to do the EMS coordination portion?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we've, we've got to go through each ambulance, just updating all the stock, cleaning. Batteries are hard to get. Got another one working on certifications, so one could be working on certifications as the other one is going through. The ambulance getting it ready for inspection. So very much, they could be working at the same time, especially at this point of time.
And you still contend two people replacing one person is not impacting the budget if they're, if they're going to be working at the same time?
Yeah, because we're, the person that we, that we, or is starting to retire was not an active paramedic. He had, he was certified as paramedic. He's been part of paramedicine for 40 years. But he solely did office work. And honestly, both of these folks, both Cindy and Rich, have been picking up slack because of health problems of my EMS coordinator. So they've been doing the job in the background now for quite some time.
Okay. All right. If no further questions, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two PCFs, one for Cynthia Morton and the other for Richard Blumstrom for position of captain.
Retro to October 1st?
Retro to October 1st, 2022.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second that.
All right, Reni and Francine, second. Could I have a roll call vote, please? All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Broden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Bowles, aye. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would emphasize that it's pretty exciting to have our first woman officer. That's a big step forward for us.
Indeed. Well, and we'd certainly encourage her to the extent that she has the time and the availability to move on for her certification so that she can also benefit. So that would be great. All right, John, you had another issue you wanted to bring to us, this, this magical UTV trailer issue that we thought we were dealing with, but we still have an issue with it, apparently. So go ahead.
Apparently, I didn't recognize the extent of the issue until I just received an update from Ed in saying that the, the funding was never approved. I know I've come to you before, and I forget exactly all the circumstance. I believe the last time I was in front of you, you'd wanted me to talk to the finance committee. I'd had a meeting with the finance committee probably back in October, October 25th. And with them, we agreed that I should be moving forward with using money from my current budgets, writing a town meeting warrant article that would backfill those expense budgets with burn permit revenue once it's received. Burn permit revenue comes in between January 15th and May 1st. We, the average is between $5,000 and $6,000. The shortfall that we have present is about $4,000. After the meeting with the finance committee, probably my bad because I don't know the rules as well as Ed, I called the winning bid and said, okay, let's move. I've got, you know, the finance committee behind it. And I then later had a meeting with my fire officers. We looked at adding some lighting feature on the back of the trailer, which would expand its role into, it was about a $500, $600 lighting feature so that we could use the trailer as both the command center and a rehab, just because brush fires, it's good to have people to get out of the sun, give them water. And so when I had put that through from Tri-County, it flagged with Ed. Ed had identified to me that there was no money available for it, which I didn't understand. And I know that the Tri-County had some concern just because he was canceling the bid there. I really would like and would appreciate help from this board to get this to move forward. We have the UTV. It's a valuable piece of equipment. I really would like to secure the additional funding needed for the, to get the trailer as discussed with finance, which was to take it out of my present budget line items, split it between EMS and, and fire line items, and then reimburse it from burn permit receipts once they come in. I believe, if I heard it correctly, he was saying that that would just take a vote of finance and select board. And I thought that vote had happened. So again, that could be, that's probably my fault for not having a better understanding of some of the point of how that went forward.
Just, just a couple of points, John. I just want to be clear. So do we have possession of the UTV as, as of now?
Well, it was, we don't physically have possession of it. I was waiting for the trailer because I thought the trailer was imminent, just so that we could put it all together, keep it. We don't really have a great place to store it. We can, we can put it down at Station 2, where there is some room there, but there is a mice issue down there that is, has been a concern in the past. And I prefer to put it in the trailer, if we have the trailer, just because that's going to be a lot tighter and won't be a mouse issue.
The UTV's been ordered and it's en route, or what's, what's the delivery time on that? Do we know?
On, on the trailer, yeah, I believe there was, I'm going to report to him tomorrow, but the delivery date that he was talking was January, so three weeks out.
And the UTV as well, or?
Yeah, and UTV would, yeah, is ready to go.
Okay. And I think, correct me guys if I'm wrong, but I think at some point, we had this also as a warrant article for the special town meeting.
I had written a warrant article, yep.
To increase the burn permit, one-time revolving fund limit, I believe. And we had just increased the revolving fund for this purpose, for the brush, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of it. For the fire, fire permits, revolving fund, whatever. We had just increased that limit quite a bit over the last town meeting, I believe. And so then we had a request to do a one-time increase. And when we heard that maybe it was possible to do it separately by a vote simply of finance and select board, we took it off the special town warrant. And since then, I don't believe finance has met, but I could be incorrect on that.
Okay. And so should I be contacting finance to get their vote and then come back to you? Or is that something that you folks can pursue? Or what, what do I need to do to, to help facilitate this?
Right. But, and I guess, John, can you help me out too in terms of when finance might be meeting next?
I can see if there's one scheduled.
Okay. Because at this point in time, we took it off the special town meeting warrant, so Ed is right in that respect. There's been no money allocated specifically for this, as far as I understand. Somebody else can correct me on that.
Originally, once, once the bid had come in, I had submitted paperwork to, to take it out of, equally out of EMS expense and fire expense. So I don't know if that paperwork is still pending. I'm not sure of the status. And I'm open to any suggestions for funding. I mean, I don't know if there's ARPA money available or what might be available, but I certainly could use some partners to get this accomplished.
I think when the idea, I seem to remember something about it coming out of the EMS and the fire wage possibility, but then that just seemed like it was kicking the can down the road because we were going to have to go back and probably replenish those funds that are always short anyway at some point in the year, right? So didn't, didn't we advise you to think of another alternative perhaps at that point?
Well, the intent even at that time was that I could backfill those accounts from burn permits. Because burn permit receipts, I've only spent, I want to say 17.5, there's a $20,000 limit. There's about a $4,315.61 overage that I'm trying to accomplish here. And that includes the lighting package that we, Fire Department had talked about officer meeting. And so with the $2,000 additional that could be spent from that burn permit money, once it's received, that would cover that, that $4,315 shortfall and replenish those expense accounts. And that was, and that was the discussion I'd had with finance committee. And, and they, at that time when we talked, they thought it was appropriate to go to town meeting. And they believed even though there was a chance of town meeting, that it would be voted down, they thought it was a positive enough move to move the project forward, that they supported that. So I'm hoping to get, I guess, that same support from you folks.
Okay. And again, I think we saw in our packages last time that, Ed, you had done some research, I believe, looking at the MGL, and we did find out, either that or through legal counsel, that it was fine to actually do a one-time approval that didn't have to go to town meeting, but could be done between a finance vote and a select board, a select board vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
As, as far as a one-time mid-year expansion of a revolving fund.
Right, okay. I mean, in many ways, to me, that seems like the cleanest way to do it. It's a matter of how quickly can we get finance to maybe have a meeting and entertain that idea. Select board has got two more meetings this month, so that would not delay it terribly, I don't think.
Does the finance have to be first, or can we vote on that? Could you vote on that tonight and then get finance approval at their meeting?
Well, I think the other issue is, John, or the other fact that hasn't been mentioned, is you had that meeting with finance and then a document showed up here outlining what you said. The Board of Selectmen was confused by it. They sent it, or the Select Board. We sent it back to finance, and then we met with finance, and finance said they never took a vote. That, just a general discussion was had.
And, and the other thing that I remember from that meeting, and we were both there, John, was they basically only addressed the one-time expansion to the revolving fund.
Right.
That they basically had no comment or anything else, or said, didn't say they had discussed the ability to, I'll just say, I'll just say rob Peter to pay Paul.
The meeting must be taped because it was certainly the advisement that it would be a reimbursement to funds used. I mean, I, like I say, you know, I think it's an important piece of equipment. I, I don't want to be the only one fighting for it. I really would like some support. I'm not quite sure what it would take to get that.
Well, I think that we have a rural town. We just had a fire where there were issues around access to water. I think we have a climate change problem in the world. And I think that the UTV was obtained through a grant. I think that I support the trailer. I think it's been a lot of back and forth and all around to try to fund this. Personally, I, I mean, you have, you have what? Personally, I mean, you have a shortfall of $4,000 from burn permits, and so the total amount needed is less than $5,000. I would support that from ARPA funds to get this bought, paid for, and able to be used by the town of Southampton.
So I don't disagree with anything you just said, but up until five minutes ago, this was a $2,000 issue.
$2,000 over and above.
Correct.
It was always a $4,000 issue.
I thought the lights just came up, which added another $2,000.
The lights were $600 addition. It was always $3,700, but because I don't, there's a cap on the burn permit of 20,000, I'd spent 17.5, so there was a $2,500 plus a $2,000 increase, so $4,500 over and above with that $2,000 increase. So it hasn't really changed, then just shifting where it comes from.
So where's the money from the lights coming from?
I'd like to wrap it into this.
Right, that's what I mean. It just.
I mean, I can take it from fire expense, it's a $600 expense. It's not going to make or break the department to spend that money on something that I think would be a valuable asset in the building phase of putting this thing together. So, you know, if you're not going to support the lights, I mean, I'll find a way to pay for it from budget. It's not a massive expense, but I think if we're going down the road of trying to make this happen, and garnishing your help to do that, especially if we're using ARPA funds, I mean, I think the $600 is a little bit relative. I think the bigger, you know, whether it's 37 or 43, it's a little bit relative. If you have major issue with the $600, because it was an after decision, I can take it out of my regular budget.
No, my, again, I support the theory behind it all. What I struggle with is that, you know, it's now over $2,500, there should be a purchase order attached to this, which means there should be supporting documents below it, so that we have the facts and we can just act on it. And every time there's a hearing on this, I'm not saying the story, but the facts change, so it's hard to make a vote.
I mean, part of the problem was that because of, you know, we had a 7% inflation rate, so from the time of its initial quotes, to the time of actual purchase, between the cost of UTV increasing and the cost of the trailer increasing, it raised over the amount that I'd originally allocated per the quotes, by this $3,700. That's what I presented to you the last time I spoke. The only thing that's really been additional to that is the $600 that, when I met with officers, to try and make the trailer, add some versatility to the trailer. It seemed like fairly short money to help the trailer be more useful. So I understand it's complicated, I understand we've been here a few times, I understand it's, you know, as we're looking at the burn permit revolving fund, if there was plenty of money in there, it probably wouldn't be near so much of an issue, it would just be the $2,000 additional, because I'm already authorized to use some of that money as I see fit for, this is basically a wildland fire unit, which falls right into a brushfire parameter. It also helps an EMS rescue. So it's really, you know, there is really just the $2,000 additional to that burn permit money, once it's received. The complication is that it's not received yet, the complication is that I'm looking to purchase it sooner than later, so it's ready for the brush season, once the brush season gets here, which is January 15th. And I'm hoping to use some money from existing expense accounts and then backfill it, or ARPA funding. I think that's an awesome idea, and I appreciate that initiative.
I guess if timing is part of an issue, as I'm trying to look at this, I mean, you know, if we stick to our process, and people can decide not to do that, but we've had a process where anybody wanting ARPA funds needs to apply, and we need to take it up. And we usually take that up at the last meeting of the month. So that, right now, is for the 20th, which is not that far away, so that is an option, I guess. But I'm just wondering if we don't think that the Finance Committee could meet and vote on this. It sounds like they're well familiar with the issue, they just never took a vote. So would that be, you know, a likely possibility for them to meet somewhere in the next 10 days or something, before we even got around to looking at it?
That would be wonderful. I'm not sure what they would weigh in on, if it isn't to use money from expense accounts now and backfill with an increase to the brush permit revolving fund. Would you want them to weigh in on ARPA funding?
No, they don't really have a role in ARPA funding, per se. It's more just, we already know that, well, we've researched through the MGL, that we are allowed to have a separate one-time increase mid-year between Finance and Select Board. We can improve that. So how you want to frame the reimbursement part, you know, that needs to be clear to them, first of all, and to us, obviously. But it just seems like that's the quicker path than having you sit down and do a, you know, the ARPA application is not arduous by any means, but rather than, you know, delaying another two weeks for an ARPA meeting, is all my point is.
I'll do whatever will help move it forward, whether it's two weeks for ARPA, or whether, I mean, trying to get in for Finance Committee and back to a meeting with you folks, whatever you need.
Go ahead. Somebody make a motion, because I'm going to lose my voice, please.
Well, I'd just like to say that I think that moving forward without a clear understanding of whether a vote was taken by Finance or Select Board, it is what it is. I think captains are people that have an expertise in fire control, making a decision that lighting is, the features is a good thing to add. Again, it's a process issue, it might not have been the best thing to move forward on without, you know, because it just seems like this particular project just keeps, you know, like spiraling in different directions. But I come back to, yes, there are some process issues that could have, should have gone better, but I think our town needs this, and I think that, you know, from the standpoint, if we had just gotten an ARPA application from Chief Workman on this, we would all be spinning our heads, wondering what the heck's going on here. So the fact that he came here and tried to explain this, and the fact that he mentioned ARPA, I think is a perfectly okay position, and I think that he has every right to apply for it if he wants, but if we had just gotten an ARPA application, we probably would have reacted as not understanding why he's doing that. So I appreciate him bringing that up, and whether we go in the direction of asking for a vote from Finance and Select Board, or whether we entertain an ARPA application, I'm fine with either one of them. I support him getting this trailer, or the Fire Department and the citizens getting this trailer.
Would anybody want to entertain the motion of approving this from the Select Board point of view, and then going to Finance for the second approval? Or do you want to follow that process of Finance first and then Select Board?
Well, just to be clear, what are you asking us to approve? The authorization deficit spend, the fire permits? Or to overspend to go to $22,000?
To do the one-time, I think it was a $2,000 increase, was that it? A one-time increase?
Right, with the intent that the $2,000 deficit would be resolved prior to June 30th.
Correct, right. I mean, if that would save any.
So are you making that motion, Chair?
If I'm allowed to make a motion, I would make that motion, that we go ahead and take a motion on that this evening, to allow that to happen, with the proviso that Finance meets sometime within the next 10 days, hopefully, to give their opinion and vote on it as well.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion on this?
And there's no current Finance Committee meeting scheduled?
No, not according to the website.
Also, can I, for clarification on the warrant, was this one of the articles?
It was removed.
It was removed, okay.
Yeah, we needed the clarification, okay.
Yeah, we thought we had a simpler way to go, by not having to do this, by allowing Finance and Select Board to, you know, being able to vote on it ourselves. So it's a matter of just going a little out of order. Putting it forth this way. So I think we have a motion on the floor in a second. If no further discussion, all those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Lumber, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Bowles, aye. Okay.
So just to be clear, Chief, you have to get an affirmative vote from Finance in order to move forward.
Okay, good.
Because both parties have to vote in the affirmative.
And do I set up that meeting? Is that something you set up? Should I be badgering Finance, or are you guys going to do it?
I couldn't send Vicky an email asking, but I'm going to bring up one other point. The award was not given for the trailer, so number one, it has to go out for quotes again. Number two, it's a purchase over $10,000, so it actually requires a contract from the town, signed by myself and Bradley.
So this sounds like another roadblock, and another reason why the town won't be able to get this trailer. So can you be clear about what it is that this roadblock is now?
Yes, we're going to have to go out for quotes again for the trailer. And number two, is it a $10,000 award or higher, so it needs a contract from the town, not just a department head going, I want that, to somebody.
What is the total dollar amount?
Under $10,000, you need the three quotes, but over $10,000, it becomes a contract, right?
With the lighting features, what is the quote? What is the total amount that you anticipate for the trailer and lighting?
I don't know if I have.
Approximately? Because I know it's a bid situation, so we don't know for sure, right?
Yeah, we don't know for sure. And these contractors are getting sick of us, honestly, because we've been putting it out and back, and, you know, partly it's my fault, because previously.
I mean, is it between $10,000 and $15,000? Or is it $15,000 to $20,000?
It's probably like $17,000, $18,000.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider that vote, and I can defend why, if I can be heard on the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So having this piece of information, I would change my vote and go in a different direction, and basically suspend our activity, and ask the Chief, or the Town Administrator, to go through whatever bid process or procurement process needs to be followed based on the dollar amount. And then, when that dollar, when that bid or proposal comes back, whatever it is, that this body work expeditionally with Finance to make a decision one way or the other within 15 or 30 days. But we need to know what the number's going to be. Depending on how old this number is that you have here, for matters that you already pointed out about inflation and adjustments.
Yeah, they could go up again, so I have no idea.
Right, and because, and we have to follow this process, because it's over the $10,000. So even if Finance approves this, he still can't move forward. So we need to, whatever is the process that needs to be done for something that's between $10,000 and $20,000, that we should do that, and then we, as a body, should act quickly when that closes.
So out of curiosity, just because I don't understand, and I apologize for my ignorance, so the first quote that we had gotten and received is no longer good because it expired?
For about 30 days. And I did notify the vendor that we were not exercising that award, because we did not have, we did not have approved funding.
Yeah, I get it. So yeah, I don't know if we'll get a quote from them again.
So, Ed, just quickly, if we went, I'm going to backtrack on this too, so much from my thought about a short discussion here. If we went the ARPA route, and, you know, took this up at our next meeting or something, John can do an application, and we take this up, we still, no matter what we decide, would this still not need a contract and three quotations? Or is the current quotation we have sufficient?
No, we would need to do the quotes again, and, like I say, any purchase over $10,000 requires a contract.
So going ARPA versus what we just decided is not a shorter way to go either. That's what I wanted to understand. Okay.
We just have to, once there's a dollar amount, we just have to move quickly.
Right.
In order to be able to find the funding, or to decide which way.
Right.
Would it be expeditious if I put in the ARPA funding up to $20,000, and then my guess is, I would hope that it would come under?
Well, the applicant.
We're asking for quotes, the same thing happened with the tennis court repair. We had this estimate, and we asked that they actually give a quote. So we're approving dollar amounts.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're, you know, you're welcome to apply, I mean, this.
But the application requires supporting documentation of the quotes, so you have.
It has to still go through the process.
Right.
Once you seek quotes, how long do you give firms to submit quotes on this?
Usually give them like three weeks.
Three weeks.
And does this require?
We have a remove motion at this particular point.
Yeah, I have a motion to reconsider the previous act.
All right. We have a second on that? I guess we'd have to have a second, right?
I'll second.
So if you vote in favor of this, you're repealing the vote.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
And opening it up for a different kind of motion.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and it doesn't take a vote of the Select Board for the Chief and the Town Administrator to put this out for bid, correct?
Yep.
Just takes an identifiable funding source, so.
It does require a funding source?
An identifiable funding source, so. In this particular case, there's two.
Burn permit fees and/or ARPA.
We don't have burn permit fees, and we'd be overexpending the money allocated, so would that mean I'd have to straighten that out before you could send the bid out?
No, we're listing both sources as potential.
List both sources as potential. So the first things first. So right now, if we vote, we're just rescinding the previous motion?
Right.
I just don't want to be set up for failure again, it's frustrating for all of us.
I just think once the bids come in and the closure, then we just have to move quickly to determine the best funding source at that time.
So am I understanding that this would go out, there has to be a document written as a request for quote to go out to vendors? Or is there one that already exists?
There's one that we could modify to add that lighting package on to and send out. I can give that to Ed tomorrow.
All right. And this would have to be out for a full three weeks, you think, Ed, for something this small?
Let's see, could I have to put it on combines? Don't think I need to put it in the central register. I would still say it would take three weeks to get a fair response.
We could have this voted on day after Christmas.
Yeah.
So do we want to call for the vote?
Yeah, okay. So yes, we had a motion and a second on this, so let's have a call for the vote to actually repeal the earlier motion and vote.
Lumber, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Bowles?
Did I hear Tishman?
Yes.
Yes, we all voted.
Sorry, Bowles, aye. Okay. All right, so that earlier motion and vote is repealed?
I think so.
So then I think the next step is for the Select Board to direct the Fire Chief to work in conjunction with the Town Administrator to issue a quote appropriate for this, and to try and limit it to no more than three weeks, being open.
And then bring it back as soon as we get bids back on it?
And available funding sources to be considered would be available funds within the permit fees and/or ARPA, depending on the results of the quotes.
And if that's acceptable, I can make that happen. I appreciate your help.
Thanks. And should the Chief have the earlier meeting with the Finance people, just as preparation for this, though? In anticipation of the quote? Or you wouldn't bother with the Finance meeting?
I would think they're going to want the same information that we're going to want before they move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion that's clear on that? Could you restate that, John, please?
A direction, you mean?
We just gave a direction.
A direction, Heather?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, John, are you clear on that? John Workman?
Yep.
All right. Ed, you okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so let's make that happen, and with a little luck, we can have it for our first meeting in January. That would be three weeks, for sure, at the moment, right?
Yeah.
So we, other delay on this? So I think we're all in agreement that we want this thing, this is just a perfect example of, you know, this crazy grant program in the cart before the horse here, where we're getting, you know, something that, you know, just was out of order in terms of what we needed. And, you know, we finally approved the UTV, and now that's going to be ready to come, but we definitely need the trailer to go with it. So, okay, let us move on then, if that's the end of that discussion, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, John, for your time. Thank you, patience. The procurement laws are nothing too, unfortunately. All right. Okay, moving on here, we have a couple of things. We wanted to review the Select Board fee schedule, something that we had brought up a couple of times, and we know that we have to do something with weights and measures, and a couple of other things for soliciting and canvassing. And Ed, I believe you've got a proposition for some new fees. for some new fees, if you want to take us through that?
Yes, I do, if I can happen to find them.
There's three, I think there's three different pages.
Okay. So that wasn't in the packet, the old ones, the old fees are in the packet, okay.
Yes.
Is that the new ones?
Basically, my proposals are in two areas. One is the weights and measures area, so... For scales, currently over 10,000 pounds, the current fee is $150. I'm recommending $250. For 5,000 to 10,000 pounds, it was $60, I'm recommending $100. For 1,000 to 5,000 pounds, it was $40, I'm recommending $65. For 100 to 1,000 pounds, it was $35, I'm recommending $60. For 10 to 100 pounds, it was $30, I'm recommending $50. Under 10 pounds, it was $20, I'm recommending 35. Weights of all types was $2, I'm recommending, that go to $5. On gasoline meters, the current rate is $30, I'm recommending 50. On vehicle tanks for oil trucks, it was 100, I'm recommending 165. Bulk storage was 150, I'm recommending 250. Taxi meters, odometers for 25, I'm recommending 40. Fabric measures, $20, I'm recommending 35. Cordage measures were $20, I'm recommending 35. Linear measure yardsticks was $5, I'm recommending 8. And then electronic checkout systems, less than four units was $75, and this is basically scanners, recommending 150. Four units and not more than 11 units was 150, I'm recommending $300. And more than 11 units was $250, and I'm recommending $450. And then...
So just on that list, so no, the only thing not being changed is bottle redemption machines?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? So this is because our state contract for weights and measures has gone up significantly, and this is in order to not lose money on that process? And the increases were based on what you learned from other towns? And what kind of makes sense in terms of making sure we don't lose money from what we owe the state for the weights and measures?
Did not look at any towns, looked at what our costs were, and then basically what we currently have out there for, in charge for scales, scanners, what have you. So currently, with what we have currently, we would take in about $2,800 a year. So then I plugged in the $4,662 for the state contract piece. It would actually require us, on an average, to increase our costs about 65%. So kind of use that as a ballpark to increase some of these and played around with some other ones, like the two to the five dollars.
But the intent is that based on units within the community that need to be weighed, that the cost associated with that would cover, at minimum, cover the contract, not looking to make a 50% profit on this, just cover the contract.
Actually, if we had exactly what we had this year, I think it would have covered 200 more dollars, which I looked at as saying, okay, you know, and I know she doesn't get paid out of the revolving fund, but Judy would spend about five hours, at least maybe six hours, to process these, send them out, collect the monies, chase the funds, and then there's a report to the state to do. Then it left, I think, another $60 that would be covered for envelopes, stamps, so forth, for that to go out.
Just one other question, when we talked about the contract with the state, I'd asked about why package stores weren't included on the scanner? Do you know, and you said you were going to look into that, do you know why they weren't included?
Because I actually had a couple other things in the back of my mind pop up that might be scanner-related that... Why, and maybe just that the, there may be a reason to buy MGLs, and it may be that they just don't know they use scanners too, so I will follow up on that.
Okay, do you want to motion on this part of the fees?
However the select board would like to do it, the other piece of it, just so I don't forget, is we did not have any police fees before because of the new soliciting bylaw. There's two fees in here for the soliciting canvas, one for a company permit of $50 and one for an individual permit of $25, that I would list under police rather than, than under select board. But the select board would still have to approve that fee.
Right, and just for clarification, so with those, those two additions or changes, the other fees on that schedule would, would remain the same, you're not suggesting any other changes?
I didn't really delve into the other ones as far, as far as what I would like to do to actually figure out if we're covering our actual costs. I can tell you that they are, they are right in line with other, those are right in line with other communities at this point.
Okay.
When would the, if we approve these changes, when would they take effect? What date would you want us to reference?
Jan, January 1st is fine.
And would the businesses get some kind of a notice as to why their rates are going up so significantly?
We can take care of that.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree, yep, okay, all right, any further questions?
And just one other thing. I did this on the balance of what we currently have for businesses and what the state comes in and tests for weights and measures. If we had businesses leave, obviously, we'd probably be losing money again. However, if we had businesses come in and add that utilize these features, then we'd be actually generating a little more revenue.
Because we did have a list of who the current folks that are being tested. I don't remember, is the dispensary on there?
What's that?
Dispensary? Maybe they've got scales.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
I don't think the dispensary is on there, but don't forget, they just started in...
So maybe one of your...
June of '21, but...
Follow-up questions?
Yeah, and, yeah, Big Y, Cumberland Farms, oh, actually, they are, Dreamer Cannabis is on here. I'll take it back, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Pure Foods, Walgreens, Stop &amp; Save, and Tractor Supply.
Yeah.
As far as the weights?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking, I don't know whether or not the package does fall under a different jurisdiction or something, but it just seems like those three of them were included.
I'll make a motion to approve the select board ceiling fees as amended, as well as, well, as amended effective January 1st, 2023. Also, the police department soliciting canvas fees as created to take effect on 1-1-2023. And then to reaffirm the existing select board fee schedules that have been in effect since January 1st of 2015 without any changes to that schedule.
I'll second the discussion.
Okay, very good, motion and a second by Reenie, could I have a roll call vote, please, all in favor?
I think there's discussion.
So are we all in agreement that, or is it your recommendation, Ed, that we not change the select board fees from 2015? Is there any need to discuss them?
I can take some time and look at that, them for like the 20th, if you'd like.
Well, I'm fine with it, I just didn't know if you had a recommendation.
From what I'm seeing in the air, I would not recommend an increase to those existing fees at this time.
The only two on there that I would question are the two associated with the park, the $60 and the $45 for the one-day liquor license or the one-day all-inclusive license.
Yeah, those, those two, let me take a look, look at the amount of time Judy spends with them, so that, those two may be time to update.
Okay, so are we including that in this motion? Or we're going to remove the select board's fee schedule and go with the other two?
I'm fine with removing that until a further date when the TA can come back.
I'll second the excluding of that.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we would, we would be voting on the weights and measures and the police fees that have been proposed this evening, but leaving the other board of, select board schedule as is until we come back to it at another meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, with that said, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Lumbra, aye.
Rodan, aye.
Tishman, aye. Piper, aye.
Falls, aye, okay, thank you very much, okay, and we'll put it back on the schedule, maybe for the 20th or something, in terms of when we can think about any other fees that might need adjustment, or early January at the very latest. Unfortunately, I think Parks Commission met this evening, so we probably missed a chance to talk to them about this for their fees. Okay, moving on, next one is just a process question. As we were looking at some of these things that haven't been updated since 2015, these are kind of administrative in some ways, but they're ones I think that are important to take a look at and figure out a way to update. So we have here a list of select board policies, and all the intention is tonight is to kind of review this list, and I believe there are 16 altogether on this list, of which the last one, the fraud assessment, fraud risk assessment policy, is a brand-new one. So that one really kind of doesn't need our attention. That leaves about 15 of them to take a look at, and I would like to just open it up for a process of how we could do this efficiently, maybe dividing up the work amongst ourselves, everybody taking a small chunk perhaps, and coming back at, you know, two or three meetings from now with recommendations, maybe liaising, obviously, if there's some liaising to do with a department head that, you know, has more, more to say about what's right or wrong about this or what might need changing, that would be one way to do it. So I'm just open for suggestions, I just wanted to have us agree on a process, and maybe if we do, then make assignments as to how we can move forward with getting these updated that have not been looked at since 2015.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think we should divide it up if we each take three or so, based on maybe related to some of the committees that you may be liaison to or other interests. And just take the time, meet with whomever we need to meet with, either boards, committees, departments, update the information, then come back and report, give the feedback and the recommended revisions to this group. And I would do that in, I would do that in writing and get it out to people. It had, it had a time, but I think three weeks to take a look at these and talk to whomever you need to talk to, to bring them up to, up to date, I think is sufficient time. And, because we all can't sit here and hash over each one of these.
No, I really, I don't want to, you know, we have them in our packets tonight, just to let you know what they are. I doubt many of us have really ever looked at them, but since they do exist, you know, some of them we may decide that we don't need them, I don't know, that, that could be a recommendation too, to say we don't need this policy anymore, I don't know. But at the very least, we need to either re-verify or ratify what we have or make updates to them, in all reality. So I would just like to get this little task off the, off the dime here somehow. So open to suggestions, but that just seems one way to do it.
Yeah, no, I like the idea, I would just ask whichever ones we take, if we can get, if each person can get the word documents, so that we can mark them up.
Yeah.
Sure.
If I have the word documents.
Yes.
Even PDFs, I'll convert them, if that's what you have.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be good.
I'll volunteer to take as a group driveway regulations, highway public way permit form, and highway fee schedules, so I think those are all relate to the highway superintendent.
And that's, that's a nice grouping. The only reason I was interested in driveway regulations was because we have a curb cut bylaw that's just been proposed.
Do you want those three?
No, just want to make sure, if you're going to do it, that, that whatever, you look at that curb cut bylaw draft and make sure we're not, we're consistent in what we're saying in both.
Yeah.
Otherwise, otherwise I'll be happy to do the driveway one.
Yeah, now, the curb cut bylaw is very short too, it's only a couple paragraphs, so it's not a long bylaw.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm, I'm, because again, it's, it's related to a bylaw that's coming up for a vote, I will take the one on conducting dog hearings, I would like to, if you all agree. Free cash and emergency weather.
Okay, all right, Reenie, Joy, any choices there? I'll take what's left over.
Yeah, likewise. Reenie, do you have any preferences?
Not necessarily, did you want to take procedures and pol, actually, never mind. I thought there was one on personnel, but I guess not.
There is, there's special municipal employee designation. Procedures and policy before select board.
I think the special municipal employee one is kind of a cut and paste from Mass General Law. I read it.
So it doesn't need to be reviewed, is that what you're implying?
That's an easy one if it's a big rap.
I think that's an easy one to do.
Okay.
That's a softball.
Pull up the MGL, yep, still the same.
Okay.
Okay, Joy, go for it.
Okay, sure, I'll do that one, I'll also do the first two, alcohol hours policy and buy recycled.
All right, fine, thank you, and Reenie?
I'll do, I guess, the three ones on the bottom there that haven't been taken. Traffic control, we're crossing out fraud alert, right, red risk, so traffic control, purchase order, and procedures and policy before select board?
Okay, sounds good, and then the remaining three I will take, which I think are fuel efficiency hearings and meal reimbursement, if that's correct, okay? All right, good, so that will just, you know, and again, I think, you know, it'd be evident as to who you might need to contact and just see if you can just grab a half an hour with somebody and see if these really are needing to be changed, some may be just fine, but let's just get them done and off our, off our plates, we have something up to date, okay? Appreciate that, and we'll hopefully aim at this for early January to come back with any, any recommendations. And we'll check in on December 20th as to how that's going, okay? All right, next, assistant town accountant, I think we had an update from Bradley, anything more to add there, any further discussion?
No, I think Bradley covered it very well.
All right, any other suggestions or comments from select board about that? All right, moving on, positions for classification compensation study. Ed, this is your baby?
Sure, knowing what we would need for a proposal, I put a list together from basically current positions and current job descriptions of what I thought we might list for, just to get at least to a count, because they, from what I'm told, they usually are pretty much $500 a position. So put this list together, and it's here for any comments, additions, removals.
I have a couple of questions, and they're mostly clarification. So under assessors, the administrative assistant assessors, what's the 47 represent, 47 vacancies?
You want to, here's the honest answer, it's the first time I noticed the 47 there, it was probably a twitchy finger when I put the thing together, so my apologies.
That's fine, the, under the, the union, the union positions are there, with the exception, there's one union, the collective bargaining group, missing.
And actually, you know, these were just kind of...
Thoughts?
Thoughts and ideas, and either because of the fact that, shall we say, in one of these...
these, we may still question whether what our salary scale is maybe adequate or not. It's a chance to check on that. And that's basically the highway one, since we seem to be, you know, hard. And then, you know, the dispatchers have, shall we say, claimed in the last couple of bargaining sessions that they're behind also. So it was a chance to check on those also.
My thoughts as it relates to adding collective bargaining spots is for positions that are not covered by collective bargaining, I see it's management's responsibility to argue both sides of the argument. But where there is a collective bargaining in place, I don't see that we should be doing the work and paying for a schedule or a review that potentially could be used against us at the table. That's just food for thought, you know. But if we are going to do it, then I would say we do all of them. And then I wonder if, given previous conversations that we talked about and where we think we're going, if we're going to do this now, should we add in one or the other of either an HR director or HR manager, or some sort of HR position so that we get the job description and that at the same time?
We could.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. I would agree with that, John. Good idea. Yeah. And Ed, if you can talk a little bit more in terms of what we're, what we would have to give off if it's Collins or somebody else. We've already gathered, or you've already gathered, job descriptions for most of these, and some of these positions, most all of these positions had been scored at some point in time, except for a few maybe that had not, or they're not findable one way or another. So are we looking to just look at possible compensation with the existing job description? We're not looking at updating job descriptions, or are we? What is the task that we want?
We could ask Collins Center if they think that any of the job descriptions, you know, through, whether it's Mass General laws or new duties or whatever, need or should have updating. Otherwise, if they don't, we'd be utilizing the existing job descriptions.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I added these up, and just on that basis, it comes up to 18,500, just to do the job descriptions you have listed here. And I was wondering, not that that's a whole lot of money, but I was wondering, is there any way to consolidate some very common, you know, administrative assistance, regardless of what department? Is there one basic job description we could go with? Or is each function in the department so unique that they deserve their own?
The directions are that if you had the same job in two different departments, they're two different positions.
So like an admin assistant across the board would not be the same from whatever, highway to treasurer's office to whatever, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But in terms of the scale and the classification, would they be the same, equal?
They may not be.
Yeah.
Based on the job description.
Right, because I, for an example, I could see where, whether this is true in Southampton or not, I do not know, but I could see in other municipalities where the administrative assistant to the town administrator is treated as a confidential employee because of the information that they have access to.
Correct.
And I'm just pointing that as an example of why, you know, in the job description would say that. I, you know, depending on how much it costs, hopefully nothing more, and then I'll get on my tangent about the Collins and how they treated us with the HR review. The, it might be good to, here are our job descriptions, you know, line them up, make them uniformed across. I mean, some of them we've seen in the past when some of them come forward, and they still have the ability to lift and carry, and some of the antiquated information that was popular in the 70s and 80s, but now has been modified and updated. I don't know. But didn't, my only other, I, prior to us getting the HR review, I would have supported the Collins Institute of doing this. My question is, is the Pioneer Valley Planning going to be involved at all with this? And if so, and I'm thinking only because of the source of money that you indicated, are they the fiscal agents? In the past, that's what he's represented to us. And I'm just fearful we're just going to repeat the process that we've painfully gone through for the HR review.
Community compact money would come directly to us.
Okay.
Because originally, I thought the next step was to put together a six-month pilot, and we've heard nothing.
Yeah.
So that we could, you know, make some decisions on what we would like to do on our own in terms of our classification and so on and so forth. But this would just give us a little more of a basis to work from. And it hasn't happened.
Right. Well, and it's been a long time coming, so I think it's a point of, you know, how much longer do we wait on something that doesn't seem to happen? And other towns that, you know, were not very favorable toward the suggestions that we had at one point in time, from what I understood, right? So, you know, it's kind, you know, we voted, I believe, you know, already some ARPA funds, but now Ed has got another idea for using community compact funds, which I think is fine too, which would save us a little bit of ARPA funds for other uses. But it's, you know, I think we just need to keep on moving on this. I mean, we're, you know, we've got so many different interpretations of our wage scale. I think it's just really important to get this nailed down.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. We need to, it doesn't seem to be any light in the tunnel right now, so we should just go on.
And when you go out, say it is to Collins or somebody, I mean, do you, are we asking them to give us a proposal back as to how they would proceed? I mean, would they be able to look at the job descriptions you send them and say, okay, here's, here's the data we have, you know, they'd come back and say, okay, well, you know, out of these, you know, 35 job descriptions, there's 10 that are really antiquated, and we really think you need to update them, and it would cost X? Or is that the level of detail we would be doing right now to get our firm price, or are we?
Well, usually, they would include at least some minor edits to job descriptions that go along, so.
Okay. So the $500 per is assuming some edits as well as plopping them on a classification scale of some sort, or developing a scale for us?
Correct.
Yeah. So they would see the wage scales that we have now for exempt and non-exempt, and then decide whether we should have two or one, or?
Right.
Is there, is a separate one right for the fire department? Is there not?
There is.
So to try and consolidate this somehow?
Yeah, the fire department one has its own, shall we say, classification, I won't say classification, I'll say compensation scale. I don't really know if we've got, I'll have to go back and look if we've actually got job descriptions to go with those or not.
You know, we talked about having this compensation plan in time for this next budget when we, when the adjustments were made last year. Is adding a task, I mean, job descriptions are really challenging, especially if we're talking across the board in the town. Is this going to hold up getting the data we need? And is it realistic to get this data by budget season, which is literally here?
It'll be, I'd say we might get it back by the end of budget season to be used.
Okay, that's including a job description analysis and revision, really? Well, if it's going to hold up, I would support getting the data on the compensation, if it's possible. I don't think our positions are that unique in the municipality to necessarily make it difficult to determine a compensation per position. I think updating job descriptions based on Mass General laws and everything else is a huge undertaking.
Well, I think when they look at the existing job description, it would require having a conversation with that department head, or whoever the supervisor of that position is, to determine whether or not, does this job description really adequately say what's done here or not, which was one of the, whether it's right or wrong, it's one of the beliefs of one of the flaws of the previous evaluations that we had, that back when the Jacob study was done, his department heads weren't consulted. They were, you had until this time to get it in. If you didn't get it in, they made up, again, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know. But if we're going to go the whole way, I'd want to make sure that there's volume and participation from as many people as possible. I'm also respectful of the fact that I don't necessarily want to delay any issue that's going to impact the budget. As far as, we told people this is what we're going to do, we're doing it, and if there's an adjustment to be made, we're going to print in this budget. But if we do a pay scale analysis now based on current job descriptions, and then we find out that 25% of them are fundamentally flawed, and they wouldn't have gotten, they wouldn't have fallen where they fell, whether high or low, we're just going to have to go back and reset them again anyways.
Well, they're going to be coming up with ranges, right? So it's really, I mean, an admin assistant, you know, I mean, I don't think the positions in our town are that unique, that they're basically giving us information around what is out there in the world, based on our region of the state and everything else. So I would just hate to, I mean, to think about having, what you said is true, like reaching out to all department heads, finding out, you know, if it reflects the work of the position. There's no way that information's going to get back in time for the budget. That's my opinion. I mean, if you're going to, if they're going to be doing that on top of the classification thing. So if there was a way to get the information for the budget season, I think that would be ideal. I still support doing the job descriptions. I just think it's, I'm not sure one is dependent upon the other.
Right. Or do we ask them to do the whole thing, but the first question we ask them is what's the timeline for deliverables?
Yeah.
And let's just say they can't meet it for the budget cycle. Then do we go an alternate route and say, okay, we explained that, we share that, we tell, share with all the impacted employees, here's the deadline, here's when it's coming in. In the meantime, we're going to do an ex-cola to get through the cycle, and then as soon as this is available, we'll implement it.
And you make an adjustment.
Correct.
Good.
And you just sense that PQB is supportive of this?
Yeah. I'm only 50%, but yes.
That's a almost majority.
Good percentage.
It's only going to take one more vote.
What do you do with the tiebreaker?
Okay.
No, that sounds reasonable.
So do you, do you want, are you looking for a vote, or do you feel you have enough direction to move forward with this?
I mean, I think I've got enough information to move forward with this.
Okay. Good.
Like I say, I just wanted to hear back if there was any job descriptions you thought were missing, which you've come up with, and or any on here that you thought didn't belong on here, but.
No, and again, the two new positions that are being considered, one underwater, and then it's listed under police, those we've been talking about. So, you know, getting the scales and the ranges would just help us decide whether or not we can actually fund those.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think what I like about this list is that it's looking, looking forward a little bit in terms of some of the issues that we've talked about, about especially some admin support. So that's good.
So, yep, because conservation agent's on there too.
Yes, it is, yeah. But the only other one to add was the part-time HR person, as John suggested, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. All right. So with that, but let's move forward on that. That's great. All right. Thank you. I think I've gotten through my coughing fit for the moment, but not guaranteed for how long. Let's see, we have any other business that we didn't discuss earlier on? I think we moved it, and I don't believe we have any other topics that I'm aware of that can't wait until the next meeting. Old business, we've had a little bit of an update on COVID situation already. Ed, our magical voiceover IP, where in the world is it today?
TPX finally filled out that form, only they didn't, and got it back to me yesterday, only they didn't fill it all out. So my next job is to confirm any information that hasn't been on it, and then I will sign it and send it along to Verizon.
And then how long does Verizon have to do to work on it before we can actually move, or can we put in the, in the phone?
Usually, they require a 14-day notice to get to the porting.
And is that going to be realistic over the holidays?
Yeah, it might play into it, but we're still going to see what we can do.
Yeah. Hey, okay, that was, certainly had hoped to have this in long before the end of the fiscal year, or calendar year, rather. But, yeah, let's, let's see if we can move it forward as far as we can, and maybe we can get lucky in between holiday times here. Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to still have the phones ready, and people could have some training, right, and learn some basic things, even if it's not totally ported over yet? Or is that not true? You have to wait till it's ported over before you do the training?
No, you can do training before the porting.
Okay.
That they would have to be installed.
Right. Okay. Anybody else have any questions about that, old business?
No.
All right. Signatures, we've taken up already on the PCFs. Now, we have our big load here, which, let's see if we can figure out a way to go through these. We have our various long list of licenses and permits for the year.
Do we have a list of, I mean, is there anything other than the list that's here?
Were there two others that came in, Ed?
Oh, I mean.
They were only electronic.
You're alluding to the fact that you don't like this list.
Well, I'm just saying, is, is there any supporting documents that go with the agenda?
A whole bunch.
Yeah.
A whole bunch?
Yeah.
There were separate documents that were sent out.
Documents. These are them, so they were electronically transferred to you.
No, I got my email open. I'll go in.
Trying to, and the email, Judy asked if anybody wanted hard copies of them in their packets to please request them.
Yeah, no, these, John, we made it as executives' decision. This is like 200 pages of stuff.
Yeah.
From all the other forms that everybody has to fill out. Some of them need their insurance information, et cetera. So we made the decision to just do this electronically, both by email and Dropbox. But I had gone through, and I did not notice things that were missing, but maybe somebody else has. But just to note, what we're trying to talk about here are the common vic licenses, the alcohol and other licenses, the alcohol package store, off-premises licenses, wine and malt package off-store premises, and the wine pouring permit. So we've got, I don't know, 20, 21 or so different licenses to go.
Actually, two documents.
Yeah, I got the email open, though.
And then there are two that came in after the agenda was done for common viculars, which is Stop and Save, and Dunkin' Donuts, which I respectfully asked to do under any other business.
What about Anytime Nutrition?
So a tracker if it's.
Anytime Nutrition?
Do you have that? Do you have the tracker?
No.
No? Okay.
Yeah, Judy had sent around a tracker too, folks, if you had seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went through them, and I have just two questions. I don't know, how do you want to do this, Chris? Do you want to go through all of them, or do you want to just?
Well, I was kind of going, thinking about doing them as a group, so all the common vics together, maybe, as a.
I'll just step out for that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Joy is abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
Or, what do you call it? Yeah.
Yeah, recusing herself, yeah.
Yeah, recusing herself.
All right, so the vics, yeah, if you want to just list the names, and then if you have got questions on any of those or any?
The question I had had to do with the same question that I think we got by email is, I think anytime nutrition is not on this list.
Oh, okay.
And the second question is, what constitutes a sporting event? That's one of the checks that you, I mean, we have a bowling alley, we have a golf course, and one of the checks that you say that you provide this service, whether it be jukeboxes or entertainment, music amplifier, whatever, says sporting event. So I just didn't know if anybody was aware of what constitutes a sporting event, because it wasn't checked by any.
And I was wondering, is the gun range considered a sporting event?
That's, yeah, that, the bowling alley and the golf course. Do you know, Ed, whether or not it's?
I would say no.
Okay.
I would say sporting event, football, baseball, wrestling.
Okay, but not golf tournament, or?
No.
And then, I don't know, I know you mentioned anytime nutrition wasn't on here, but also we heard from a resident that they thought Dunkin' Donut was missing in Tractor Supply.
Dunkin' Donuts is on here. I think Tractor Supply is too. I think Tractor Supply is, too.
I just, I just, I'm reading the email, that's all.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts we have. Tractor Supply?
No.
But they provide a service of, I don't think they provide food, do they?
Why would Tractor Supply be on there? Yeah.
From what I have seen of reading the Mass General Laws, it requires some type of seating to go along with the food or the drink to qualify as a common vic. I do not see that in Tractor Supply. From what I've been told, because I haven't visited the nutrition place, that they don't, but.
Well, and they're, they're new, they may not be totally aware of what they need to apply to, right, too?
Well, no, I asked another department that does inspections.
Oh, okay.
I would think that Anytime Nutrition would definitely apply.
Yeah, and I would.
I mean, if Dunkin' Donuts does, they do.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would question whether the seating thing would be the only thing, really, because I mean, I think about Biches's Orchards, and I don't see any seating over there, so.
Yes, they have picnic tables out under their pavilion.
Uh, okay, outdoors, okay, there you go. Good point. All right. I withdraw that, okay? I'm still missing the point about Tractor Supply. What do they provide?
They don't have any seating.
Right. I mean, you could go in there and buy, you can buy a cold soda, you can buy candy off the shelf.
Oh, okay.
The, oh, never mind, we're only on CV, right?
Yeah. So do we have, if we have any questions about CV, can we go ahead with that grouping or not? Unless we've got questions about anybody there?
No, that's all I had.
All right. Anybody else about the CV? If not, I would just ask that the motion include the listing of the names of those that were approving for CV or putting forth?
I'll make a motion to approve the current list that we have for common vicular license, or whatever you call it.
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Tishman, aye. Broden, aye.
Fowles, aye. And Joy has abstained, recused herself. Okay, thank you. The common vics are approved for those, that grouping? All right, next. Joy can come back in, I think.
There she is.
Now I understand why we got the email, because if that individual didn't have this list, and it wasn't, it does not appear, some of these don't appear on the agenda.
You want to take up alcohol next?
Yes.
So my quick question on that is the, the $1,000 fee in there for pure food, is that their, their old license, or is that the new license?
That's the renewal of the old license.
The old one. Do we have any update on their new one?
It was supposed to be going to the floor for a vote.
Still in process, okay. And every, I'm looking at the tracker that has everybody on it by category that Judy put together. Is everybody that's on here for all these categories, have we been assured, or have they been run by the tax collector?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the, the alcohol on premises, all alcohol on premises, all alcohol package stores off-premises, wine malt and package store off-premise, and wine pouring permits totaling $14,000.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favors, roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
Tishman, aye. Broden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, all approved. Thank you. All right, that takes care of everyone, I believe, right?
So, and then we've got the two that came in late, and if the select board would please take them up under any other business, which is Dunkin' Donuts and Stop and Save?
They weren't included with the original, I thought we approved all the ones under the common vic, no?
Their checks were not received until off, after the agenda was printed.
Yeah. They were sent down separately.
Okay, they're not on the agenda, okay.
That's, that's.
I'll make a motion then to approve Dunkin' Donuts and.
Stop and Save.
Stop and Save.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Broden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, all approved. Thank you.
So what, just to clarify, so when we voted, when our first vote was on the common vicular, the CV, did, was it the intent of that vote to include entertainment, the co-op, and the other as well? Again, I'm going off the one-page Excel.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the way it's listed on the agenda, John, which is a little bit different. So the common vic were just those that had the common vic.
So you think that covered entertainment?
I don't know that any of those had entertainment involved.
I don't think they did.
Well, Paisanos is the first one.
No.
They have entertainment, they have.
Well, that's kind, Paisanos would be under.
Alcohol.
All alcohol on premise. And it says alcohol, common vicular, entertainment, coin out, none, coin out.
All right. Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It would include all those.
Okay.
Yeah. So the only one that we think we don't know about for sure is the Anytime Nutrition. Do we need to check on that, or?
I think, I think you probably should. I mean, I think the Good Eats To Go was on there. I think that seems like it's appropriate to be on the list.
We send the application. Please fill us out, or tell us why you don't have to comply with it.
Yeah.
Okay. How about Fletcher Farm? Any others?
Yeah. Everybody, I mean. Bring up nutritionist, I mean, who's, who's the, well, never mind. Send it to the whole town, every single resident, that's it. Send an application to every single business in town.
Well, you bring up a good point. Why not Fletcher Farm?
Well, again, by what I've read in Mass General Laws, I don't think they meet the criteria, but.
Okay. I would guess if Dunkin' Donuts does, that Anytime Nutrition does.
Yeah, I mean, people are sitting there.
Yeah. I think we can get an application.
Well, let's, let's follow through on that one and see if we have it for our next meeting. Let's be sure that we got everybody we need to get, okay?
Well, who would do, who's responsible for these inspections? I mean, there really isn't an inspection with a liquor license.
Not for common vics. The only ones are the alcohols licenses, which are inspected every year in conjunction with this by building and fire.
Yeah. So common vic, we just need to understand whether Anytime Nutrition falls under a common vic. Is that correct?
Well, we need to know if they have a table.
We do.
If they, so it's being represented that you can sit down inside.
Right.
Which therefore, they would need to fill this out, but.
Well, let's, let's, we are not totally clear, let's verify it for our next meeting, okay? And if they need to apply, they need to do so. Otherwise, they will not be able to be open in January, right?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And who's verifying?
I will go verify.
Well, no, I think, no, no, I don't think.
Do we need someone to bring them the application? I don't want them to not be able to open up in January.
I took it to mean you wanted an interpretation as whether or not we are correct in how we're interpreting master general law.
Right. I mean, I wasn't sure if we fully understood the MGL related to this, and whether they would fit in. They're a little bit different than any of the other businesses that we have, right? There's no food, per se, it's only a beverage, right? So I don't know if that fits with other.
Well, those foodies are.
Yeah, they're supposed to be meal replacements. They're advertised as meal replacements.
Yeah. I think, I think we just, we just need to have a clear understanding of what qualifies and what doesn't.
Yes, I would appreciate having that.
And then we can go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's clear. So Joy, would you like to work with Ed on that?
Yes, I will.
All right. Thank you.
We're on it.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, very good. I think we're done with that. No warrants, anything else here? We have a couple of sets of minutes to approve for September 13th and October 11th, I believe.
Any objection taking opens a batch?
Nope.
No, I just need to, um.
Anybody have any corrections, or?
I have a couple of questions, but let me get to it, okay? Switching between all these documents.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve both December 6 and December 13, no, sorry, September 13th and October 11th minutes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay.
All right.
All right, September 13th, if you turn to the second page of the minutes, under the circle, third circular bullet point, it says AG approval and comments were forwarded by the town clerk. These will go into effect once the AG approval is posted. It doesn't really, I'm assuming that means bylaws from town. It doesn't, I just think it maybe should say something more about what was approved.
I hear you.
Because there's nothing above it or below it that really, do you know what they're referring to?
That even references the bylaws.
Bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I think I'd be good to add, just AG approval of the bylaws and comments.
Right.
And then the other one is, see, when I was reading this, you have to know that Norris is the elementary school, but under select board, when John was giving his report, the second to last line, it says Norris will be meeting tomorrow night. I think Norris School Committee, just so, because when I was reading it, I was thinking, who's Norris?
Good point. Sure.
That's the only recommendation on those minutes.
Okay. Anybody else see anything?
I'm just looking that, in that line of bullets on page two, the last one, Chris Fowles, an aye. Who's aye? Would like permission to write letters of support and apply for signs.
Oh, that would be Ed.
That would be Ed.
Okay. I think we should just plug a name in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is this?
The last bullet point on page two, the circle bullet point.
Last circle.
Chris Fowles, an aye, that would be you, Ed.
Yep.
Before select board section.